Please join us in the flag salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Atlantic of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Well, we don't have to adopt the agenda. We just got one item here, but you know, I did get some feedback from some citizens that sometimes they can't hear what's being said, and I guess, how do we know if this is being broadcast, you know, on the TV? We have somebody in the control room, and I guess, I said, "Well, I think there's a number you can call or email or something." Is that?
Yeah, let me get that, and I'll have them put it on the screen.
Okay.
And wait and give it to me.
Okay. So, why, a lot of people here tonight. Bear with this for one second, please. Okay, she's gonna put that up on there? Okay, very good. All right, so we did roll call, and so we don't need to adopt the agenda. This is a public hearing, and the only item we have on here, which is considered an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of design permit for the renovation of the existing building at 7,000 Marina Boulevard. We want to start off with the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. What we have before you tonight is an appeal of an action by the Planning Commission to approve a design permit for 7,000 Marina Boulevard. Again, as indicated, it is a renovation of an existing building. That was approved in August of this year by the Commission, by a vote of three ayes to one no. Appeal was filed in a timely manner, and in September of this year, the Council authorized staff to hire an architect to review the proposal and offer an independent third-party analysis. Nichols Booth Architect was retained by the City to perform these services. Their report is attached to the staff report, was made available a few days before this hearing. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Nichols Booth, Gary Nichols, to actually walk through the primary design findings and recommendations of his report. I'll turn it back over to me for the final recommendation, and then some comments from the City Attorney.
Okay.
Let's see if I can do this right. Is it good? Good volume?
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
Pardon me, Members of the Council, Ivan Delventhal. I'm here tonight in lieu of Teresa Stricker, the City Attorney, Deputy City Attorney. I did, before we proceeded to receiving any evidence in this matter, want to make a brief statement concerning this quasi-judicial hearing. Tonight, the Council will be serving in a quasi-judicial capacity in considering the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the design permit for the renovation of the building at 7,000 Marina Boulevard. The Council has the power, under the City zoning ordinance, to affirm, reverse, or modify the decision of the Planning Commission. In order to serve in this quasi-judicial role, Members of the Council must not have prejudged these matters. That is, all council members must come into the hearing with an open mind. Members of the Council also must be ready, willing, and able to both listen to the evidence presented to the Council by all persons in this hearing, and importantly, to make a decision based on the evidence presented during this hearing. All of the elements I've just described apply to all members of the Council, and they are crucial to ensuring that this process is fair. If any of you feels that you cannot do any of these things, keep an open mind, listen to all of the evidence, and make a decision based on the evidence that's presented tonight, the proper action would be for you to recuse yourselves at this point. One additional related point, prior to the opening of the public hearing, or of the evidentiary portion of tonight's item, if any of you has had any communications up to this point with regard to tonight's item, putting aside any non-substantive communications you may have had, or any privileged communications, such as communications with the City's Attorney, I would ask that each of you take this opportunity to provide a brief description of any such communications. Thank you.
Does that include a tour of the building? I'm assuming it would.
Yes, it would. The Saturday tour, correct.
Okay. I'll start off. I took two tours of the building, one this Saturday and one previously, maybe two weeks ago. I'm not sure of the exact date. And it was basically the same tour as what we had Saturday, so. Who else?
Yeah, I was at the tour on Saturday. I had also toured the building prior to our first meeting regarding this matter.
I took a tour this last Saturday at the workshop, and I toured the building a couple months ago with, again, with City staff and the architects for the design change. I have seen a couple emails, but have not made any decisions on those emails, and nothing that was substantive. And I'm more than willing to keep an open mind on this matter.
Great. You can go, or Laurie? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I've had...
Put your mic right up.
I think it's on.
Yeah. Michelle can tell me whether she hears me or not. Okay, good. So I had a tour of the building with the applicant, I think that was prior to the filing of the appeal. Then, subsequent to that, I did have email exchange with Commissioner Munier about his dissent. I've had a conversation with the executive officer of the Chamber of Commerce, particularly actually in his capacity as the facility's manager for the Hitachi Building. Had a couple of email exchanges that did involve my fellow council member, O'Connell. During the Saturday tour, I had a conversation with Emmett Cunningham, and we had a subsequent email follow-up. I have not had conversations with other council members, other than the brief ones, mostly email exchanges with Council Member O'Connell. Everyone comes into a complex situation with a variety of views and biases, and so I think everybody starts there somewhere. But the question becomes, is one able to keep an open mind? And I know that my fellow council member, Lance, asked me this question once before, and I will answer the same way I answered then, which was back in September. That I'm not gonna deny that I have biases. I certainly do. I think everybody does. But I certainly am willing to keep an open mind and listen to the evidence, and not make any determination until all of that is in. And I would add to that, that that is my professional approach, because after all, I am a professional economist, and that's what economists do. They don't come to any conclusions without careful evaluation of the evidence. That's our task, and that's kind of built into my personality, as someone who spent 43 years teaching that field. So I feel comfortable in playing that role, and looking forward to the hearing and the evidence that comes up this evening.
Hey, Laurie?
And I also toured the property this past Saturday as part of the public site visit, and previously, I also met with the applicant and toured the property after the last council meeting on this matter.
I would like to add one item, but I did see the email from Emmett Cunningham to Council Member Miller, but was not part of the original conversation that instigated that conversation.
Okay. Too many stones left unturned.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, you're on.
Make sure I... So I don't do this very often, so I'm a little nervous, but I'll just start, and everybody's, we saw everybody at the tour, and everybody's in, has all the information in front of them. I'm gonna briefly go over my report. All right?
Is this something that's gonna be on the screen here?
No, I have no.
No?
I have it for the screen.
All right, okay.
I'm really going to summarize my report, which we've all read, and so, again, we were hired by the City of Brisbane to be an impartial reviewer of the design proposed by the applicant, that being the task at hand. I'd like to step back for just a moment and make an overarching comment that kind of tees up art, architecture, interiors. It is the vessel that actually holds the space, that actually creates architecture, art, and interiors. So that, I would like to start out as that framework. Again, the space is very important in its containment by the architecture itself, and that is the filter through which I proposed and reviewed the five, six elements here, okay? Number one was the squaring off of the main lobby. Currently, it's cylindrical. It is tightened somewhat space-wise, so by squaring it off and making it larger, it actually makes it potentially more useful as a reception space, as opposed to just a transfer space. So, number one being, in our context, we feel that that is an acceptable design proposal. Number two is the screening of the, also somewhat elliptical, screening of the mechanical system and the elements on the roof. They had proposed squaring off the screening and making it a darker element. We did not agree with the darker element, keeping in the white theme of the building, somewhat ambivalent on whether or not it should stay elliptical or rectilinear. During this, do you ask questions, or do I finish and then you ask questions?
Oh, go ahead, and we'll...
Okay, enough. The third item is the angled awning element, which is a protruding, awning angled window treatment with the porcelain panel on the top with a window underneath. It's on the southwestern, southeastern elements or sides of the building, where ribbon glass are on the northern side. The applicant has proposed to straighten that glass out. Again, I'm not gonna go all the way through the report, and I know that this, it is, if you will, an awning, could be, if you will, from concept, retracted. And as I said in the site tour, today's more egalitarian workplace pulls exterior elements to the core, leaving light and views to be shared by all. I'll leave that there. Essentially, as we move on this element, as we did on the tours, I had people turn around and look at the full-height glass element and the angled element. You can see that the view and the light is blocked about approximately 50 percent. We like to also think that currently, in making buildings more efficient, that requirement is actually a requirement in lead certification for a building, which someone might, would like to do for this building. So it's a critical, a critical element. So, in closing this element, or this item, we actually proposed four different elements in trying to retain that form, the angled element. Moving on, to replacing the pop-outs with more, more full-height glass, and actually areas that you could actually step out onto. So again, in this one, we thought that this would increase views and light, and where we agree with the applicant in this particular case. Number five would be the installation of overhead doors, three of them, I believe, on the more northern side of the building, that would open up onto new decks, which we advocate for with regards to inside-out, creating a very livable space. We did, on the other hand, also talk about mechanical challenges, possibly that might cause also access to birds from the outside, possibly wind issues. We think, not one way or the other on that particular case, but we do support that, the overhead door and deck. We did not support adding accents and colors. We liked, we followed through with the white color scheme of the building. In the report, you can see that we added the four potential solutions that would, in our case, for the angled windows, create a more purposeful function, again, form following function. I'll close there.
You done? Okay. Any question for our third-party individual? Mr. Booth? Mr. Nichols? Laurie, Ray? Well, I have one question which follows up from a part of the tour on Saturday, and one of the issues, of course, is the problem of water leakage from the window systems. And there is a variety of matters concerning that, but I think your comment was that it's difficult to know whether changes in glazing and sealing and what have you would or would not fix that, because you didn't really utilize someone who's expert in that area. So you're not prepared to make a comment on that issue. Am I correct about that?
That's correct. I would advise water folks come out, take a look at it.
Other questions? Cliff?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for doing this, and, you know, so yeah, I do have a couple of questions. You know, it's great having you come out to the site on Saturday, and having it be a public meeting, so that anybody who was interested could, you know, walk the site and hear your feedback in regards to these different principles that we're exploring. So, you know, the first one is the entryway. So, you know, the applicant wants to enlarge it, wants to be able to have, you know, a much more inviting experience when you enter the building, so that you could see through the building to the atrium, which you described as the key element of the building. Being at the site on Saturday, and when I was there before, the space is limited. So I'm glad that you called that out in your, in your report. In regards to the screening up on the roof, so you recommended that this not be changed, but it seemed like it was very subjective. I mean, you could go either way. I mean, I kind of feel the same way about that. So if you could just explain a little bit more why, you know, you're kind of open to whether or not it could stay, or should stay, or be changed.
My sense is you really pick it up, that it's an ellipse, when you're very close to the building. From a distance, whether it's an ellipse or square, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between the two of them from a distance. But definitely not dark, so.
Yes.
I didn't add, again, my job was to be, can I do this?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I know.
My job was to be impartial, so I don't really, I'm not even really mentioning the campus feel of what the applicant is trying to do. I tried to be very, very, I suppose, almost in a point theoretical about the form and the function of some of the items.
You know, that form and function, I'd like for you to elaborate a little bit more on that, because you were pretty articulate at the, you know, at the tour about, you know, the reason for that, and I'd like for you to...
The vessel itself, again.
Dig a little bit deeper into that, yeah.
So it is, it is a design axiom, that the form should follow the function, the two married together. So when one fails, the other does, and that's really where some of these items, I think, are taken to test.
Yeah, you know, when we were on the fourth floor, and you had us look at, had us look facing west, and from that position, you could see one room that had the flat window.
Yes.
And the other room to the left that had the awning over the window, and the sun was facing the building, and the flat window, you could see out, you know, to the top of the mountain. The room was lit up with sunlight, and yet the other window, it was, it was in shadow, and you couldn't see the top of the mountain, and so I...
Right.
You know, sometimes, you know, you can write these things, but when you can demonstrate and show that picture in real life, you know, that's, I think that's the best way to, you know, kind of get what you're trying to...
There was a point with regards to that window element as well, if we jumped to that, the window element. It, folks have a hard time actually coming into the space and seeing it as a headquarters for themselves, which is somewhat detrimental. And again, that's contextualizing over here. I want to still try to stay on point in that, okay?
Yeah, no, no, for sure. And then, in regards to the colors of the building, I know that you've pointed out that you'd like to see the building stay all white. One of the things that we did talk about during the tour was being connected to 5,000, that the two buildings spoke to each other. And one of the things you said, "Well, you know, maybe the other building should be white, maybe both should be white."
Correct.
I'm just curious to know, what is your desire for the buildings to be white? What's pulling you in that direction?
I'm staying with the original 7,000, which I believe is very beautiful in white. So 5,000 is not a very attractive building, so I think not cut off my nose to spite my face, I think it would be a good comment to say about that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I take a curveball here for a second?
Uh-oh.
This isn't for you.
Okay.
Okay, this is for the viewers at home, because the graphics at the bottom of the TV screen aren't working tonight, so you can call 415-725-2332. That's 725-2332, if you feel we're having audio or visual problems on your TV sets. And usually, it's, they're not being able to hear us, so maybe the council members want to move the microphones a little bit closer. So, that, sorry. Okay, Terry?
With the, when you are looking at the entranceway and the curvature that it's currently, and that, I think, ties into the roof structure, the screening on the roof, but to me, a lot of the architectural difference is the rounded entryway. And how do you feel that the squared entryway changes that feel of the entire building?
It does change it. It does change it. Again, balancing the form and the function by making it larger, it makes it more usable for a reception lobby area.
And architecturally, is that diminishing?
Subjectively, yes.
And then, you, on your, on your report, you gave us a couple different options for thought process.
Thank you, thought process, yeah.
Thought process.
Mm-hmm.
For retaining or not retaining the frustrations on the triangle or the angular window. And I did pull you aside and ask you, because I'm not good with drawings, I have a hard time with conceptual things, and so during the meeting, I did stop and ask you about these. And so the existing conditions, and I apologize that the public can't see these, there is a thought that you could remove the solid screening on the upper portion of the window, and replace that or put it in with glass.
Correct.
And that could possibly retain some of the original design aspects while still allowing more light into the perimeter space.
Correct.
And when you were looking at, or you could make it completely decorative and just a shell of framing.
That's right. The other, the other two images are not ideal. One was just leaving the structural steel, so you'd end up with a 10-foot, every 10-foot of structural skeleton of the previous finistration element.
So it would just be an image or a ghost effect?
A ghost, that's a good word.
Okay.
I do, I do point out, though, that putting glass on top of the, removing the ceramic awning and putting glass on that will also alter the building. It will, it would, that element is white, so that element would actually darken, so you'd end up with a wider band of darkened element. Not unlike the ribbon glass.
So it would be similar effect as the ribbon glass would be, where you've got the sort of mirrored?
That's right. If you saw it elevation on, you would, you would pick up a dark ribbon effect. You would only pick up the beak or the awning on the edges, at the two points.
And then, when I was at the building and went to the, you know, not necessarily looking at it straight on, but more from the sides?
When I took you over to the corner, and sort of what I think is a really, a very, very, very nice perspective of the, really embracing.
And, and I felt that the building had an imposing feeling because of the way it sort of leaned out to you, so it almost gave you a sense of motion, or a sense of looming over the parking lot. And is that something that you would consider a grand effect? Or is that something that is, again, subjective?
It, all design is... It, it, all design has, has a very strong element of subjectivity. It, it is, it is what it is. Even, even trying to battle between form and function, there's subjectivity to it. That point in the building is, is very interesting, that's why I brought you over there. It, it creates a forced perspective, so that, that angle is actually coming out at you in a very sharp point, so it makes, makes for a very dynamic building. I, I'm not sure I'd use the word looming. I, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't use that word, but an activated building, it's very visually activated by, because of the angles.
That's probably a better word, visually impact.
Right.
And when I said looming, I didn't mean it particularly in a bad way.
Okay.
I just felt that it was something that, that had a lot of, of form to it and that it, it really had an impact.
It does.
And, and that, that was something that I thought was something, was very special about it.
It, it is. Again, I will, I will ring the form follows function bell again. Very important.
And, and going back to the circular entryway and the, or the squared off entryway version, looking in at the building, when I was there at the entranceway, they've, the interior has been blocked off. We've got these columns that are going up, but the interior has been blocked off so that you don't get a view into the building.
Correct.
And, and that, I think, and perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong, is part of the shell, or, or the interior space, it's, the, the columns are part of the shell or the structure, but those walls where it comes in, it, it's not necessarily impossible to open that space up. Is that?
Can I phone a friend? Nothing. I said, can I phone a friend? I, I am not exactly sure. I, I can't answer one way or the other on, on those interior elements, but I, I know which, which ones you're talking about. I believe when you come in on the left, that that, that is a, that wall is not structural. I'm not sure about the one on the right, it might be the, the elevator core, but I'm not certain. And I, if I could phone a friend, I'd be kidding.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right at the moment.
All right.
Okay, Laurie?
So to follow up on Cliff's questions about the, the roof cap, so you had said in your, in your analysis that you recommended going with the design proposal to change the entryway, but you were ambivalent on the roof cap. And you noted that the, the roof cap and entryway are currently both rounded to be matching. So I'm curious as to how you reconcile those two differing recommendations.
Again, the, the ellipse is only really perceived as an ellipse as you move up close to the, closer to the building. So I, that, that makes sense, that it's, that you really don't pick it up as a cylinder until you're, or an ellipse, until you get closer to it. So I was recommending not, not necessarily spending the money on that, but.
Okay, but it sounds like you, you had mentioned you're ambivalent on that, so that's not a strong recommendation.
Not a strong.
Okay. And then as for the, the color accents, you had recommended keeping the building white.
Yes.
And when you made that recommendation, were you considering at all the, the 5,000 Marina space?
No, I was not.
Okay, so you weren't considering the.
No.
Proposal to have this campus feel, you were.
It was.
What, what was?
In head, but, but not necessarily, I mean, my, my, my focus was, was on, on this building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other question? So I think, thank you, Gary. I think we're probably ready to open the public hearing then, if that's council's pleasure. And I have numerous slips here.
Well, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Just, and I guess this comes back to asking the staff, if I may, through you. With the A Thomas, we had, you know, presentations from both the applicant and the appellant's before we had the public hearing. And so I'm wondering, is that the way you want to do it this evening, or is, what's the procedure you want to follow? That's my question.
Councilmember Miller, I would suggest that the appellant move first with, with their case, so that would be you and Councilmember O'Connell, followed by the permit applicant's case, and then any rebuttal cases, and followed by public comment at that point.
Okay.
Is that consistent with what was done in the prior case?
We did, with A Thomas, something like that.
That's fine. Okay, go ahead.
Do I sit down?
No, you can sit down, thank you, Gary.
You can relax, but don't go away.
So we are here this evening because this appeal was filed by Councilmember O'Connell and myself, and I just wanted to go through a couple of the main points that were of concern to us, that we thought further discussion was appropriate. And the first point is to note how important this building has been historically in terms of its recognition, its significance, and the architectural awards it has won. The principal design architect, Theodore Brown, whom I'm happy to say is here this evening, made the statement that the successful incorporation of daylight in the project is largely based on a manipulation of the building's geometry using calculated angles to capture and control sunlight. The award that I want to reference, that is in the appeal, is in 1990, the building in its architectural design was a semifinalist standing in the International Quartonario Competition for the Recognition of Innovative Technology in Architecture. And the authors of an article in the magazine of the American Institute of Architects in 1990 noted that, quote, "The Quartonario judges focused on the technological aspects of the fenestration design, where window angers were calculated to minimize interior glare and reduce over illumination while at the same time reducing solar heat loading and subsequent demand for air conditioning as energy conservation techniques. The angled window projections effectively provide permanent sunscreens, obviating the need for interior lines or shades." End of quote. The building also won an award in 1992 from the American Institute of Architects, and it's true that they focused on the atrium. There are two general plan policies that were not referenced in the staff, original staff report before the planning commission, that we would like to make sure are taken into consideration, and that's Policy 10A, which says, quote, "Develop an environmental strategy for economic development. The strategy should include methods for encouraging the use of renewable resources and the preservation and restoration of the unique features of the community for future generations." And Policy 136 says, quote, "Encourage the maintenance and rehabilitation of structures important to the history of Brisbane." End of quote. These are from the general plan. Now, the next section of our appeal regards, is regarding our concern about some of the proposed renovations and what they would do to this award-winning design. And at first glance, anyway, it seems to us as if it would undermine that design and take away its distinctiveness. And I would like to quote Mr. Brown again. "The southeast and southwest facades contain continuous integral sunscreens with shade and diffuse direct sun infiltration. The sunscreens, inspired by canvas awnings, make a dramatic design statement, capping windows that slope outward at a 42-degree angle and creating glare-free interior spaces, unobstructed views, and its distinctive facade character." End of quote. Removing, and I now go on to the next paragraph, which quotes from Commissioner Manier. "Removing the five-level angular window treatment from the southern sides of the building would take away the visually important, quote, 'distinctive facade character,' and make it into a, quote, this is from Commissioner Manier, 'run-of-the-mill structure,' end In light of the various concerns we have about the proposed changes in the distinctive architectural design, it is our view, when we made this appeal, that the first required finding of design review cannot be satisfied. And that first finding is that the proposal's scale, form, and proportion are harmonious and the materials and colors used complement the project. The Deacon Building was a Class A corporate headquarters. It was intended to be special and distinctive, and those kinds of buildings are going to be a little bit more expensive, just by their very nature. But it is our belief that it is possible to maintain the integrity, at least consider options, possible scenarios, possible ways of dealing, particularly with the fenestration system, that could make the building retain its architectural significance and also make it marketable as a corporate headquarters. We are certainly in favor of the buildings being rented. I think where we have a difference of opinion is, you know, what makes them most attractive to potential tenants. And that's where, I guess, where we have to need further conversation. It was quite instructive to me that, it was reported that no one, of the people that they've contacted for interest in renting the two properties have even come to the site. And so I'm guessing, and this is something for further conversation, I'd be very interested in response to this, that a good part of the rentability problem is in the property management over the last four or five years, and also the location of Sierra Point. Sierra Point has two problems. One is access, which we know about, and the other is, it isn't San Francisco. And just reporting, and this was a conversation that Emmett Cunningham and I had, some of the tech people really don't like leaving San Francisco, and there was CEO from a tech company that just had to recently resign because he proposed moving to Daly City, of all places, where there was more space, good transportation, much cheaper rent, but there was a revolt among the employees who refused to move out of San Francisco, and as a consequence, the CEO resigned. So I guess the point is, when I talk about marketability in the appeal here, that we have to sort of look at Sierra Point as a special location, and what is it that will attract people there? Not the same kind of things that attract people, obviously, in San Francisco. And I'm very interested in hearing comments on that. And the last point that's made in the appeal is that we really see, two last points, we really see the Deacon Building as a wonderful example of public art. It's probably the most important example of public art that the city has. It's the only building that has won these kind of architectural distinctions. It, it, it has a very important history, and it has a, an architectural feel, which in our view, anyway, is extremely impressive. And it would be most unfortunate if it were necessary to, to diminish that or destroy it. And we're very concerned that we do this without having a full and open public conversation, and if there are things that we haven't thought about or want to discuss further, or maybe there's some kind of way we can collaborate to save some of the elements that we really think are important while also increasing the rentability of the property, which obviously anyone who's a part of the city and the council and the staff, we're certainly interested in, in having the properties occupied and fully a part of the viable business community in Brisbane. We certainly strongly support that. It becomes a, a matter of, okay, so what's the best way to achieve that? So that summarizes the basis of, of our appeal. And I guess Councilmember O'Connell may would like to add some things. Anything to add, Terry?
Well, I, I think that you've stated it very well, and you thought about it, we thought about it when we filed the appeal, that I really felt that this was an important building, and it's, being different is what makes it important. I know that we're looking at the 7,000 Marina Boulevard separately from 5,000, but that building hasn't been rented either, and it's not because of the water leakage problems or, or the other lack of maintenance issues that, that certainly detract from this property at the current moment. I have always felt that this was a building that is worth saving, it for its uniqueness, and would hope that we can work some way to keep the architectural historical balance of the building with the surrounding water and open space and mountain views being enhanced as best we can during that renovation. So I thought that it did deserve more attention from the council and from the public, because we do know that many things happen that the public's not aware of because attention hasn't been brought to it, and I think that this building is important enough to have the attention that it deserves.
I have a number of slips, but who's going to speak for the applicant? Is that you? Okay, come on, you're first slip anyway, so come on up.
My name is Eric. I'm with Marina Boulevard Property, LLC, which is the current owner of the, of the property. I, I wanted to say a couple of things today. I wanted to be able to make sure I could educate the public in terms of some of what we have done, and also the reasons why we feel strongly as we do about what we think needs to be done. Before acquiring the property, we went ahead and had a initial public hearing with the planning commission to try to understand exactly what we wanted to do and get the feedback back. Subsequent to that, we've had a public site visit back in July, which was noticed to the public, and then we had a public planning commission meeting, and then we had the decision to discuss the appeal and authorize the architects, which is a publicly noticed meeting. And then yesterday, or on Saturday, we had a public site visit. Out of all of those meetings and times, every member of the public that I've spoken to outside of the appellants and Commissioner Manier has been in favor of what we are looking to do and has expressed that opinion to me. And out of the people who appeared at the site visit, that was the, what I heard from all of them. And so I just want to make sure that that's on record and considered as we're discussing and figuring things out here, because we, we think it's an important part of the process too. We are prepared to invest a very significant amount of capital into both buildings. The 7,000 building, though, in, in our view, and as you'll hear from, from, I think, other people's responses in the real estate community, is not leasable to a technology tenant, given the way that the window systems currently align on the southwest and southeast really sides that are angled, the awning. sides that are angled in the awning. As you remove the periphery offices and you have more people focused on the center of the building, their views get heavily diminished with the current systems. Ourselves, the current property owner, are not prepared to make the other capital investments that we need to into the 7,000 building, really unless if we are able to do something that we see will be marketable, because it's important for us that our investors are well looking after and that we're making smart investment decisions. We disagree a little bit with the appellants in the belief that this building can't be attractive to a San Francisco tenant. There currently are very few alternatives greater than 100,000 square feet. As the city continues to move further down south with the renovation rehabilitation of Candlestick Park and Lenar's projects, you know, the city is changing, and the most important thing for a company is to be close to their employees and amenities. And the outdoor areas of Sierra Point are truly unique for the area. The views are unparalleled, and we think it's important ideally to be able to market both buildings together, to be able to capture somebody in who can really make this be their new home, ideally a tenant who needs a lot more than 150,000 square feet, you know. In my mind, 30 years ago, when this building was built, I think I read somewhere that this was hopefully to be the starting point after the Hitachi Building to be the birth of Sierra Point, allow it to fully get built out, and that, you know, hasn't happened. But I feel like now, as I'm standing in front of you almost 30 years later, it can happen, and ideally we can bring in that tenant who wants to expand and who wants to take the space next to it or some other other space. I think it's, in our minds, it's something that, you know, is very important to think through and understand. We really appreciate the building, too. We think it's a special building. It's why we bought it. And we just think that what, in our mind, in today, and what today's tenants are going to look for is the atrium and that collaborative workspace in the area, to have that be their main area. But we have to get them in first, and they have other desires, too, which have changed and morphed over the last 30 years. So we feel that's a very critical thing. I think that's all I have for right now. I mean, I would say that, you know, while the leaking of the windows is something which is causing significant damage right now, and as we're potentially going to have more storms, is going to continue to cause damage, you know, we put forth what we try, what we put forth, because we felt it was required for us to be able to market the property to today's real estate world, to really be able to pull into the tenants who are there.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for Eric, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Cliff.
So Eric, just looking at this picture here, so from this photo, it appears that you, from, say, this window light can come through and get into the atrium from the side. Is that what you're proposing with having these windows to be able to have light come through the side of the building into the atrium area?
Correct, yes, though. We are proposing to have full iron ribbon glass there to really allow the building to open up, to use as much electricity during the day, and we think, you know, really to provide great views from all parts of the building, because, you know, when you turn around and you face the one side that has the glass, it's amazing, it's bright, and it's exciting. And I feel like when you turn around the other way, to me at least, it feels a little bit darker, and it's a little bit more depressing instead of being a place you want to go to and spend more time at. I guess the other thing I would say is, I'm not sure if every tenant did, but if you look at it when Walmart.com was in that building, they did have blind systems up on the entire sort of areas that have the angled window system. So even though I think the original tenant may have felt that wasn't necessary, additional ones obviously did.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you all.
Ivan, so you mentioned about rebuttals. Is that...
We're not hearing you. I'm not hearing you.
Sorry about that. Let me start over. We can do it one of two ways. If Councilmembers Miller or O'Connell feels that they need to address something right now, something they've just heard, we can certainly take that up now, or we could proceed to receiving more input from those here who want to speak on the matter, and either or both of you could address those after that, you know, toward the end of that process. It's really flexible as to kind of what the mayor and the members of the council would like to do.
Your pleasure.
Yeah, I'd like to raise one issue, and it's sort of, it's a question, because we're, you know, we're talking about the light from the angled windows, and yet I've been on three of the five floors, and it's my observation that on those floors, there are offices that are built along the side of the wall there, which means that for most of the distance of those walls on most of the floors, there's no way the light's going to get into the interior because you've got offices with solid walls built there. And I don't know when those, I don't recall them being there with the original design. I don't know when they were added, but obviously whoever added them didn't have much concern about light from those windows getting inside. I don't know what the reasons were, and maybe it was a matter of, for that time, you know, they needed those private offices and so forth. But what it certainly does is it blocked, it wouldn't make any difference if you had even ribbon windows there, and if you had all those offices there, you're not going to get any light inside either. So it just seems to me it's pretty hard to get a sense of how much light would be coming inside if you have this solid wall of offices there that basically blocks those windows. And so I appreciate some conversation about that.
John, is it maybe... Come on up, Eric, but I guess Ray was alluding to offices being built after or the original design. Do you know anything about that, if that was the case, or...
I expect that was a tenant improvement by a subsequent tenant of the building. You know, you can do those kind of interior changes without, you know, nothing beyond a city building permit. There's no design review required for interior modifications to the building?
Thanks. It's Eric Clapp again. I just wanted to speak for a minute to the question that was raised, and I think, obviously, the way that companies set up their offices as part of the culture and the corporate culture, however it's going to be, what we find in today's tenants' desires is they want things to be very open. And so part of our plan would be to eliminate all of the perimeter corporate offices. I think, you know, it's not just about the light, it's about the views, too. And that's one of the things, too, is that, you know, the views, the further you get away, the more they get distracted and diminished by the angling of the glass and distorted also by a little bit of the shape of it as well, too. So I think it's both those things that are there, and, you know, I can't speak to the prior tenants' culture. I can speak to all the buildings that we own in the area and the advice that we get from architects and from our brokers and all that we do to tour to try to make sure we're on top of the current trends, because it's one of the most critical things to do to make sure you can land the right tenant for Brisbane.
Thank you. Okay, so are you ready for the public hearing? Okay, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing right now, and just come up and give us your name for the record when I call you. Eric, you've already spoken, so you were the first slip. So next slip I have is David Needham.
Can you guys hear okay? Hi, my name is David Needham. I live at 260 Monterey Street. So first off, I just wanted to share with the council that I actually worked in that building for five years when it was under lease by Walmart.com. And as Eric mentioned, from a kind of cultural perspective, one of the most important things that you'd want to achieve in kind of a kind of modern technology kind of era is that openness, and that was one of the things that Walmart.com, just from a cultural perspective, wasn't yet there at that point. So, but anyways, that's just a quick aside. One of the things that I just kind of wanted to share, just in reading some of the recommendations that were made, I actually really feel great about all those recommendations. When I think about kind of the squaring off the lobby, it definitely creates a lot more useful space. At Walmart.com, one of the challenges we had in particular when it was stormy and windy were those propeller doors or the circular doors. They would literally, we'd have to close them off and lock them because they would start picking up speed, and so I can only imagine that a squared-off building with kind of proper doors or sliding doors would actually be frankly safer. So I very much support kind of the squareness, and as a retailer, when we're working there, trying to get stuff in and out of the building, that led to a lot of problem, having that just like small space there. So definitely agree with the use of that. In terms of angled windows as well, I can tell you, as a person who works very long hours in technology, that the angled windows were gloomy when it came to winter days, because there was not a ton of light that actually kind of came in. So you relied a lot on the incandescent bulbs in the ceiling, which buzzed and didn't do great things for someone, again, who's on a laptop or a screen all day. So again, very much I'm glad to see some of the recommendations being made on the removal of those, just because I think it'll create a lot more useful just feeling and space. The mechanical doors is also one that I thought was just awesome, because again, when I would spend summers at work working, the atrium could at times become very stuffy. So having the roll-up doors and having the natural wind, I think, would have been an amazing thing and something that I certainly would have loved as an employee working in there. And then one of the other things in context, the color. Again, being a leader of a technology company, brand is incredibly important to you as a technologist, and brand is really pervasive through everything, right? So I think having the city council really rule on what color can and cannot be used actually kind of limits the potential occupancy, because as terms of like, my company as an example, like, our colors wouldn't work with white. And so even from a logo perspective, I think we'd want to be open to enabling colors, not necessarily, you know, if black is out of the question, great, but at least entertain other colors, because it might actually limit potential companies that couldn't want to come in because their brand and logo wouldn't work with just an all-white facade, especially when you consider kind of marketing the two as a campus, which I think from, again, a space perspective would be a really useful thing. Second kind of commentary to specifically Mr. Miller on rentability, as someone who led the procurement of 15,000 space recently, or 15,000 square feet of space recently for my company, I would have loved Brisbane, and I'm a technology guy, and I run that for the company, right? However, this building in particular in Brisbane as an area lacks a couple of things. Aesthetic, and so in that context, like, having a building that is kind of, or at least two buildings that, again, having kind of been, spent a lot of time there, kind of run down, I'm not going to be able to attract high-caliber talent to come to some place, it just doesn't feel nice, right? So having, again, someone that's, you know, at the table willing to make investment, I think, is phenomenal, because that would at least kind of be at the first level of aesthetic. Second thing I think is actually just access to food and kind of creature comforts, you know, gym, all of those things. So I think the real thing that we should be thinking about how to actually attract the tech culture here is actually about accessibility to food. From an accessibility of the actual Sierra Point itself, I can tell you as a person who employs half of my engineers from San Francisco that drive all the way down to Redwood City every single day, they would love to have a shorter commute that only had basically a mile and a half off the freeway, and then right easy access onto the freeway as well going northbound into San Francisco. So I definitely think we should kind of rethink kind of the aspects of rentability and really think about this potential investment as something that could actually really unlock the potential of kind of at least getting past the first hurdle of aesthetic, because I got to tell you, I wouldn't be able to convince any engineer to come and work there right now. And lastly, and this is, you know, just a personal opinion as someone who paid my property taxes yesterday, when I saw this appeal, I was actually really disappointed to see that we're using city funding to hear something like this, especially in context when we have an organization clearly here that is willing to help and actually create economic development in our community by taking on what is going to be a fairly sizable investment to make this campus work. And I really feel like we should be supporting any entity right now that is willing to make an investment into our community, especially to rehabilitate two buildings that are frankly kind of eyesores right now and that are not usable to tenants, prospective tenants like myself, but also many other leaders of technology that, again, would be rather spending their time here with their families than necessarily on the road for an hour every single day. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Next slip I have is, one second, Tom Heitz.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for appealing this insane proposal. In the past, I've spoken many times against projects, but always from an architectural design standpoint, always. Let me paint a simple analogy. Let's take another award-winning building, the Guggenheim Museum in New York. Let's square that off, think of how much more space we could get. Insane idea, huh? This so-called design change does just that, changes the award-winning design and the character of the neighborhood. I see in here that there is a proposal for 7,000 Marina Boulevard. Where's that? Should we not be looking at two buildings together as one, talk about a campus? This has no soul. It's as if a first-year architectural student just discovered the T-square. There's nothing about sustainability. Many of you may not know about the, one of the original goals of the Sierra Point Architectural Design Guidelines was to purposely provide articulation to the facades to avoid and prevent mediocrity. And this building won awards, and now they want to destroy the reason for its award to match a non-descript building. If they didn't like the building in the first place, they shouldn't have bought it. I'm tired of developers coming to us and crying, "We spent so much money already," and then they get their way. There's no way to prove marketability, rentability until afterwards. Yes, views are nice, but these people are supposed to be working, not looking out the window. You are not concerned about the views when you tried to give us a plaza at Sierra Point surrounded by buildings, which then create a view corridors. I urge you to pass this appeal and reject the proposal. Thank you.
Tom? Next person I have is Alex Wilson.
My name is Alex Wilson, and I work for CBRE. We are the brokerage firm that was hired to lease the buildings on behalf of the ownership. For those of you who don't know, I mean, I guess I can give a quick overview in terms of the market. Our market is very, very healthy. The market that I am talking about runs from Brisbane in the north down to Menlo Park in the south. We are at about a nine, nine-and-a-half percent vacancy. Sierra Point has historically been a challenge for our market. The vacancy rate here today is right around 40%. There are numerous reasons why this submarket is overlooked, and we, you know, as a team are here to change that. I think our ultimate goal, everybody in this room's ultimate goal is the same, and that is to get a building leased, you know, up to about... to about 1,200 bodies would be a great addition in value for the city of Brisbane. So I've spent about eight and a half years working in this market. I've represented multiple tenants in this submarket who are still here today, tenants who have grown, tenants who I've brought from other markets to this submarket, and tenants who have been in this submarket and chosen to leave. Now, what I hear, the comments I hear, I guess, could be construed as a subjective, but I hear from the street what, what the people want. This is a great building. I think we all can agree on that. And, you know, it's just a matter of getting from point A to point B properly. Now tenants, we strongly feel that the ideal candidate for this campus is going to be a tenant coming out of San Francisco. Odds are, it will be a technology tenant. It is extremely important to have the, to market our property the right way for this changing workforce. About 15 years ago, the average square foot per person was about 250. Today, we're seeing it at around 125. Common area space, the common area space per employee is being taken away. And what you have to do in return to attract these tenants is provide a work, a building, a workspace that gives them alternative areas to collaborate. So as you take away the square footage per employee, you need to give them other amenities. Those amenities could be access to public transportation, they could be having a food service or a gym in the building, they could be freeway signage where every day you drive to work and you can see your big sign on the building and have some pride of ownership in working at that company. Another huge asset, and what we're seeing more and more of, is, is the views, the view corridor. And I don't think there is a better building on the peninsula that can offer that. So I think there are a lot of reasons why Sierra Point could be attractive to a tenant. And I strongly believe that we, you know, with the right design implemented and the right marketing strategy, we can get that tenant into Sierra Point. That's all I have in my notes. Thank you.
Okay, Alex. Okay, next slip, I have Mark, I might butcher your name, Geist Reader?
We did this last time. Yeah, you got to write both times.
Okay.
I thought I'd share and try to respond to some of council members, Miller's questions about a group that's not here, which is the voice of the tenant, the tenant that's eventually going to occupy these buildings. Throughout the last 30 years, like Alex, I've been with CBRE and I have helped many, many landlords either develop or redevelop buildings. I think at last count, probably I've been involved about 30 or 40 million square feet of buildings. So it's, it's given me a pretty good perspective on what tenant wants, what tenants want. And a couple of notes I made, the first thing I think is very, very important to know is there's been huge changes over the last 25 or 30 years in how tenants use space. So what worked for 7,000 Marina, when the building was designed, don't necessarily match up with what today's tenants are looking for. Today's tenants, if you're looking for space today, tenants will put together a matrix and they want things like location, which we obviously can't change. They want to find a building that can accommodate their size, their growth. But then there is a huge war right now for talent. And companies really are trying to use their real estate to help them attract and retain the best employees out there. And that's where some of the changes that, that Eric's firm has proposed really address. Companies are looking for space with bright, bright open spaces, collaborative work areas. They want very unique spaces. They want space that is distinctive and fits their culture. Today, real life example, if a tenant's out looking for space, you know, Brisbane is going to compete with other cities in the, in the peninsula. Brisbane's going to compete with buildings in the East Bay. And there's a bunch of other cities besides San Francisco that have big blocks of space. So it's, it's still a competitive environment out there. So if you're a tenant, you're going to put together your matrix. If here's all the important things to you, if and when we get tenants to get up onto those floors and they see the windows and they see their lack of views, they typically just turn around and walk away. The changes that have been proposed help put the building in its best light. It's going to, proposed changes make it distinctive. They provide open collaborative work areas. They provide the environment that a tenant is going to want to end up leasing. I also wanted to address Councilmember Miller's questions about San Francisco tenants. Unique statistic, we track, our firm tracks every tenant that's out looking for space. There are 12 tenants that are over 100,000 square feet looking for space in San Francisco right now. There are five spaces available that are over 100,000 square feet. So on a routine basis, we are getting calls outside of the city from tenants that are considering relocating either some or all of their facilities outside of San Francisco. And that's primarily tech firms. Rental rates have increased about 60, 70% over the last five or six years. The average rate in downtown San Francisco is $63 a foot. By the ballpark, it's up in 70 or 80 or even $90 a square foot. So the tide's risen for everybody. So it might not be a tech firm that ends up here, but it might be another firm that's been squeezed out of San Francisco simply because those tenants can't afford it. So I strongly encourage you to accept the changes and approve the changes that've been proposed, because they're going to put the building in its best light and it's going to allow the project to get successfully leased by a tenant that's going to take hopefully both buildings and possibly even expand further in your city. Thank you.
Seemed like a person that knows the answer to this question, so. When we were on the field trip on Saturday. Not. Okay, how's that? Okay, hear me? Okay. When we were on the field trip on Saturday, the statement was made that there are four or five, you know, big companies that, that were contacted, and I don't know whether it was with you or someone, you know, involved in the commercial brokerage area, and who quote, refused even come out and look at the property, end of quote. And that was a little surprising to me. And so I'm figuring out, so do we have an explanation for that? Did they give any reason? You know, why wouldn't they even come and look? You know, because it would seem to me that they could at least, if they're got any vision, okay, this is where they are now, but no, this can be fixed, right? If, if the location and, you know, the space and so forth was suitable to, to their objectives. So why wouldn't they even come and look?
Without diving into each individual instance, it's tough to give you, there's not a broad answer. I think there is a perception of the project in the brokerage community and every tenant that's looking for 100,000 square feet has a broker, consultants helping up their space search. So there's a perception of these buildings as old, tired, ex-Walmart buildings. I'll give you one great example. We had a gentleman spoke that used to be with Walmart, Walmart relocated. Walmart's broker is a very prolific broker, represents a lot of technology companies. And I called him on another one of his clients. He said, "I know the projects," you know, and he said, "I don't think this would work for our clients." I said, "Stop, timeout. Here's some of the things that we're thinking about yet. They're obviously not been approved, but this is the vision. The vision is a corporate campus that's creative, that's got a unique features, that we're really going to try to do some of these interesting things in the building." He said, "Actually," that stopped in his tracks. He said, "You know, send me what you can," which we can't send yet because it's obviously not, not been approved. But his interest level in the project went from about a two to about a seven. And that, that's one broker. And, you know, our goal is brokers, if and when this gets approved, the reason, the way you change perceptions is, you know, a lot of hard work, but you've got to get renderings, which I think you've already seen of. So we, we need to get that out to the, the community, the brokerage community. We need to advertise. We need to call on all those other tenants that are looking for space and show them the new 7,000 Marina, because the perception of the old 7,000 Marina will not get leased. It's one of the longest vacancies in the Bay Area and it'll continue to be one of the longest vacancies in the Bay Area.
But 5,000's been vacant for the same period of time, so.
The new ownership's only owned it for a short period.
But still, I mean, the vacancy has been, as Councilmember O'Connell pointed out before, it's been the same, right?
Yeah.
So I assume that there are different reasons? Yeah. Yeah, so, anyway, it's a question.
Can Alex Wilson answer that?
If you want to come up and answer it. While he's on his way up, is two to seven, is that out of a scale of 10?
Yes.
There were two additional tenants in the 5,000 Marina building. So Walmart.com had both 5,000 and 7,000. They, I believe, subleased one floor to Singtao Daily, a Chinese newspaper that relocated to South San Francisco. And there was another tenant in there on a, on a separate floor. The name is skipping me, but they were also in the building. One 7,000 was vacant. Walmart left.
Okay, all right. That's, that's good. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So could I ask one other question?
Go ahead.
This is interesting. I'll take advantage of your expertise. So the strategy you're following, and I guess this is a, maybe you might want to pass it off to somebody else, but just also a question about strategy of, the approach you're taking is to say, okay, let's get some specific kind of vision approved that we think is going to sell. And then that's going to attract tenants. That's kind of what I hear your, your strategy is. And so my question is, so why not, you know, go out and negotiate with tenants and say, okay, you know, what do you want? And then they'll say such and so and so and so. And then they'll say, okay, if you, if you give me this, I'll sign a 10-year lease. And then you come in and say, okay, we got a tenant here calling to, you know, sign a 10-year lease and this is what they want. Obviously, you're not or decided that that isn't a workable strategy, I guess, but so why not?
I think what we've found with experience is that if you do the work, the tenants will come. If you don't do the work, it's much, much more difficult to generate interest. I mean, think if you're looking for a home and you go out and look at 10 houses, you always kind of gravitate towards the ones that have been renovated versus taking on a, a massive project. Many, many of these technology firms in particular are growing very, very quickly. And if you ask their facilities person to, if, if you, if the space is done and it's in, you know, open space, it's ready for someone to move in, they can move in quickly, and it's a, that's a two or, that's maybe a three or four month process. If you say, "We're going to renovate the outside. We need to go to the city, city and get this approved." This is, and a two or three month process turns into a 10 or 12 month process. And these tech firms don't have time. They are taking down big chunks of space and moving in very, very quickly. So the gestation period that they're, they're going to live with is very, very tight. And they just don't have time, number one. Oftentimes, tech firms, they don't have the benefit of having a deep, deep corporate real estate department. If you go to an IBM, they've got 100 people in their real estate department. They can do exactly what you described. But, you know, go to Uber or go to any of these firms and they've got four people in their real estate department. So they don't have the time, the bandwidth, or maybe sometimes even the experience to, to live with a massive renovation project. And they'd much rather have a landlord like Westport, who's got a very sophisticated architect that knows the voice of the tenants and what they're looking for, build 80% of the project. And then the tenant only needs to focus on the specific interior improvements to get the project fitted out. So it's a resources, it's a time, and it's a perception issue. Does that make sense?
Very good answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person I have, Emmett Cunningham.
Emmett Cunningham, 131 Larry, resident of Brisbane. Just wanted to make a couple of quick comments, actually maybe more than a couple. First, the first person who came up here and made some comments was also a tech worker and I cannot do anything besides second, everything, single thing he said. He really nailed the points very nicely. Regarding Councilman Miller's comment about the CEO who wanted to move to Daly City but then resigned, the other half of the story that he didn't mention was that this, this CEO also insisted that the employees also relocate all of the, from foreign offices to San Francisco. They dropped off some 20 or 25% of the employees in October. And in November, he wanted to move to Daly City, specifically in an office that was three times the size that the board believed he needed. He'd, he had a fight with the board. Part of the appeal was, complaint was that the employees didn't want to move to Daly City. Part of the complaint was also that the board didn't want to buy an office space that was three times the size they believed they needed, especially after the reductions in the workforce. That's the other portion of it. Let's see. Eric, the applicant stated that openness is desired from today's applicants. I can support this with my experience from the last 15 years in the workforce in the tech world. Things have changed dramatically. I mean, I've been at this for nearly 30 years and the last 15 have shown a lot of changes. Offices used to be reserved for people who were managers well, and they were always on the outside of the building. These days, that's not the truth. There are no officers for, for managers. There's maybe two or three officers for managers. VPs of large organizations don't have offices. They've got a desk in a communal area. The offices, there aren't any. There are conference rooms, all located in the middle of the building. Light is leveraged. This building doesn't come close to that. You'd have to do a lot of reconstruction to get there. The external offices currently in that building block a substantial amount of light and moving offices towards the core will increase that light. On the other side, when I walked in around that building the other day with most, all of you, when I was in those outer offices, it was incredibly bright. It was really painfully bright. And I saw a number of people putting on their glasses as they went out there, particularly when they want, walked into, their sunglasses. And Clark, your, your sunglasses, I believe, are polarized, which I didn't realize until that day, or your glasses are. So this, this is one of the things that they would actually need to have blinds in order just to make that thing work. And that, for today's office environment. The other comment was, views aren't important. People are supposed to be working. Contrary to that opinion, when you're working and you're focusing on a monitor that's a 30-inch monitor, 14 inches from your face for multiple hours, it's good to stare in the distance. It's really good. It lets your eyes, you know, readjust. It helps you, helps you think, it helps you refocus. Moving forward, there were three planning commission meetings over five months to provide input and direction to the planning commission. Did the city council really need to wait until after the whole thing was approved to start a complaint? I think input could have been given earlier and, and bypass this whole problem and, and this whole appeal. I, I read through the reports, I looked at the attendees, I watched the videos, I watched some of them live, I watched some of them streaming later. I do that a lot. And I didn't see any residents there. And that was one of the specific complaints. I think it was item four in the complaint, that there was not enough public interest in this. Do we really have to raise public interest by having an appeal just to raise it? If the public isn't interested, maybe things are working, maybe not. But I think that's, I mean, it's not, it doesn't seem like that's the way to raise interest. It seems a little broken. The thing that really gets me is how much money was spent on the appeal. Consultants, special, special meetings, a special city council meeting to discuss the topic, multiple things on the part of the city staff. I can't imagine this was less than $20,000. Maybe we have, maybe we're cash flush, but I, if I'm not mistaken, we're not that cash flush that we can just toss around lots of money easily. We should be able to cut these things off fairly quickly or early, not sit back and wait till the last minute and file an appeal. That's, that's poor, that's poor management. And as a resident, I have to say, I'm really disappointed that this is how we manage change. This is my biggest problem. I'm looking at this from a high level thing, not this particular instance, but we've seen this over and over again. The city of Brisbane is going to be experiencing 10 to 100 times this amount of change over the next 10 years in the bailiffs. If we, if the city council and the city cannot figure out a better way to manage change than this, then change is going to proceed unmanaged. If we can't get this down, we're in trouble. So what is it going to take for the city council to learn how to be more, manage change more efficiently? I'm really focused on that, because we've got 10 years ahead of us, maybe 20. I don't know how long it's going to take to get through the bailiffs. But I know that there's a big old thing coming down about a, about a stadium for the 20, 24 Olympics. I think we've all heard about that. And last but not least, when is the city council going to start being friends, friendly with businesses who got out of their way to be good partners? We really need to work with people and develop a good reputation. I'm actually afraid that part of our problem with renting those particular buildings has been that we're not business friendly. And we need to fix that. I can't prove that. I don't think we can prove anything else either. But I do think it's a concern. Thanks.
Thank you, Emmett. Next slip I have is Anya Miller.
Mr. Mayor, Council, before my comments, I'd like to yield my time for architect Theodore Brown, the original designer of this building. the original designer of this building.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Theodore Brown. I'm the original design architect for the Dakin Building. First of all, I wanna tell you a little history about it. When I first met Harry Nazanium, Nazanium, he owned a building, uh, down, a little further down the peninsula in Oyster Point. A warehouse hired my firm to design the interiors for his company there. About six years later, I was on a plane flying to New York and he was on the same airplane. And I saw him and I said, look, Harry, uh, how are you doing? He says, oh, gosh. He says, you know, we're designing a new corporate headquarters at, or a new building at Sierra Point. And I wanna talk to you about doing the interior. And I said, well, who's doing the building? And he says, oh, I've got this other firm doing it. So I said, okay, when we get back, let's get together. So we got back and about two weeks after that, we got together. And Harry showed me the drawings for his building. And I said, gee, Harry, you obviously don't know the difference between a spec office building and a corporate headquarters. And he says, what? What are you talking about? And I said, well, this is a spec office building. I said, why would you build, go through all this time and energy to build a, a building for yourself when you can just rent a black one there? That's mostly empty. And he said, well, what would you do? And I said, well, give me ten thousand dollars in two weeks and I'll show you. And so he said, okay, I'll do that. But what I didn't know is he got five other firms and gave them ten thousand dollars. And so there was an architectural competition. And everybody, I didn't know that at the time until I went into a meeting to present my design to him and another firm came walking out. So anyway, we won the competition and he saw the difference. Now, the problem with this building is, it is a corporate headquarters. It's a single tenant building. It's not a spec office building. And if somebody bought it as, thinking it's a spec office building, they really made a bad purchase. And I think that's, you know, a big difficulty with it. Now, one of the things I, I was researching in this time when I designed this building is I'd done about three million square feet of interior space all over San Francisco, Los Angeles, Texas, Jakarta, uh, Singapore. And the buildings with great views, like the B of A, you go up to those offices facing south and their blinds are closed all day long. Because if the sun's shining, you can't have that sun coming in your office. It ruins everything in your office. I mean, you, the glare is horrendous. So I was always curious of how you design a building to take that glare away. And at night in those high rises, you'd stand there to look outside and there'd be these great views of the city and it would be like looking at a mirror, because then the glass would appear like a mirror and it would just reflect yourself back and you couldn't see the view very well. So I was always curious of how do you handle those problems? And then there was always a heat gain. If you talk, if you touch the windows when the sun's shining on them, it was, they were very hot. And it's always interesting that the mechanical engineers always put the, uh, the cooling right at the bottom of those windows, because they knew that's where the heat came from and they had to get rid of it. So I've always been interested in the energy efficiency of buildings and how you, how you make them not only energy efficient and, but comfortable. And I don't know if I can get the overhead here, if somebody can show me.
Harry can do it for you.
So this drawing here shows the conceptual part of two floors in the building. A floor here and a floor here. Shows the angular windows coming out like this. And you can see up here, there's a one foot wide skylight. Cause I, if you just have light coming in from one direction, it's very glary and it blinds you. I was always interested in how can you get the most light in, in an indirect way into an, an interior space? So up here, the skylight brings light in here that comes down to the floor. This is an awning, it is an awning, uh, just like if it was made out of canvas or something. Then the window here lets in reflected light. So that the other one that's right below there, the sun hits that, bounces off of that and you, you get a glow from the end wall that reflects back into the room. Some of it comes down, hits this panel, goes back up and hits the ceiling and comes way back in. So you get light in the, like twelve to fourteen feet into the interior. And it, it's interesting, because I've heard two opinions. Some people said it was dark in there and other people said, well, it was very light. They had to put on their sunglasses. Now, at this time of year, that's probably true, because the sun is probably coming directly in here. We designed it knowing that in December, that we would get some slices of sun coming in there. And, uh, everybody decided to live with that. But the idea was not to have lights on at all during the day in this, in the ceiling. And that worked. When, when Dakin originally had the building, I would go into that building and the lights are never on around the perimeter. There was no need for them. The other thing that happens with an angled window is you don't get any reflection in it. Either at night or in the day, you don't get any glare. You've got a crystal clear view looking outside. The other fascinating thing is when it rains, the windows don't get any rain on them. And, and when it's raining outside, you have a crystal, crystal clear view through the windows. This is a kind of, my theory about this was, is almost to take a light fixture and turn it inside out. Instead of the light source being inside, the light source is a movable thing through the sky and you're inside of the light fixture. Up here, I show a typical, let me pull this down. A typical light where you have the cube, you have the bright, you know, uh, windows and where the blinds are gonna be pulled anytime the sun is out. And at night, it acts like a mirror and the lights are on all the time, because these days, people want it dark. They have on computers all the time and they don't want that much light in. I've, I've learned that. Here's the concept here where this panel here shines very brightly from the reflected light from the awning that comes up. Originally, at the ends, I had glass that was taken out so that it would have an expansive feel. The, the concept of this was energy efficient, uh, comfort for the tenant, no glare, and the windows were always clear. Some of my other thoughts were, people talk about the view. Well, I can tell you, we're designing six corporate headquarters in San Francisco right now for high tech firms. The buildings are fifty to eighty feet wide, a hundred and seven feet, six inches long, and no windows on either side. That isn't stopping any of these people from leasing these buildings. They're all south of market. They're in horrible neighborhoods where you have to step over brackly bodies to get in and out of these buildings. But these are old concrete buildings, we just sandblast. There are, one thing they talk about, there are no interior partitions. The first thing we do is go in and gut the whole thing. Because any tenant improvements, there's very few offices, mainly conference rooms. And I think that's been confirmed tonight. They like exposed and sandblasted concrete, exposed steel, exposed metal. They like the raw materials. But all of these companies have their own cafeterias. They have their own chefs. We design their cafeterias. And they provide breakfast for free, lunch for free, dinner for free. These guys aren't leaving. I mean, they, they are in there forever. Now, one of the things about this building is, it, it's interesting. The Italians gave it the best award, because the Italians really recognized this as a wonderful piece of architecture. I mean, this building is a treasure. I mean, how many treasures does Brisbane have? You know, that you drive by the highway and you can see. This is a very special building. I've traveled all over the world. There are very, there's not another building like this. I mean, this almost gives Brisbane an identity. So, you know, do you wanna kill your, your identity and turn it into another developer building? I mean, that's what I see. And, you know, you know, why are they dumbing it down? Why don't they make it better? You know? I would love to see panels. One of the things is your, your decorator architect talked about taking this awning and putting, uh, glass there. But I would say, why not put, let's do something to save energy. Let's put photovoltaic glass panels in there. You know, let's, let's look at something to make this building even better, not just tear it apart. Because it isn't gonna, you know, that's what they're looking for is energy efficiency. I mean, they can be photonic panels, more energy efficient. You, you could look at doing vents in the wall to get a little more natural air coming in there. You could do LED lighting. That area is always windy. Why not do some wind generators for electricity? You know, there's a lot of methane in that soil. Have they looked at using some of that methane to run their mechanical equipment instead of having to have it piped in? How about geothermal in the parking lot? Maybe there could be a canopy that ties these two buildings together that have, again, photovoltaic panels in it. I mean, I don't see anything here, but, I mean, I feel like I'm in a decorator conference. Like, there's nothing here about how you make something good. I think what the, what's happened is they bought an eighty-nine Ferrari and they saw the headlights around and they said, well, let's make the headlights square, because we don't like the red, the round headlights. The, the screen is sloped back, the windscreen, so let's take that off and make it vertical. You know, I think they probably bought the wrong building. I think one of the good things I heard from one of the brokers is probably the best thing they could do at this stage is to gut the whole interior. I have learned in dealing with tenants, and we still do a lot of tenant interior, that tenants can never imagine taking out a wall. They can imagine if putting in a wall, but they can't imagine taking it out. I mean, if I were their architect, the first thing I would do is get a contractor, gut every partition in the whole place and open the, open the space up. Because that's really kind of where people and where firms are going these days. Almost every kind of firm. And when, once you do that, that's gonna open up the light and the views to the whole building. You know, thi- this is an idea building. This building is based on ideas and values. It's not a human warehouse. Most spec buildings are just a human warehouse. And that's what makes this building so special. It was built with ideas and ideals. It wasn't built as a warehouse. You know, I mean, it's your city. You guys can decide what you wanna do, what's important. And I think that's what makes one city great or greater over another, is they have values. They, they protect and champion and defend the values and the ideas. And developers come in, they do a building, two years later, they lease it out, they sell it, they're gone. I mean, developers, I've worked with the developers, they come in, they, I build buildings for them in San Francisco. They make ten, twenty, forty million dollars and they leave and they bad mouth the city and how awful the city treated them and such. Well, it isn't the city's job to make sure these developers make money. That's not your job. Your job is to make sure you, you have a nice pleasant place to live, that you've created some interest in your city, that you've created human activities and human things that make your city really great and a wonderful place where people would like to live. So I don't know if anybody has any questions here?
I have a question.
Laurie, go ahead.
Well, I want, first I wanna say thank you for coming. It's really an honor to see you before us and really appreciate you going into the background and the history of, you know, why you built this building this way you did and what you were looking for. You had mentioned that, um, the way that you designed the building, that it let light in about twelve to fif- twelve to fourteen feet into the interior. And I'm wondering, you know, if you were to design the building today for today's tenant needs, which you noted are more open without any of these exterior office buildings, would you design it this way? And if not, how would you design it?
Yeah, I would probably still, uh, design it the same way, because you still wanna get light deep in the inside and you don't want direct light. You want indirect light. You want reflected light, because that's always the easiest working light. And again, you want light from a number of sources. And that, I would still use that same philosophy. That's just, you know, the nature of architecture is how a light, architecture is really all about light, how a light enters a building and how it does it comfortably.
So if the, the, um, the angled fenestrations were to stay, how would the light enter the interior of the building further in?
Well, it, it's the, over the atrium, you, you know, they have the big skylight there, I assume. I haven't been in the building in a number of years, but they have the big fan skylight. You know, and, you know, it's, it's funny. We put lights in these buildings and these young kids, they almost never turn the lights on. They're sitting in there in the dark, because they're on computers. I mean, that has changed the lighting significantly. And now, the new lighting rules are, all lights have to be on, on a gauge that if natural light comes into the building, they'll turn off automatically. That's a new, new energy code. Or they'll dim them up or down. And they'll adjust, you know, in a, in a natural way to cut back electric, electric use each. And I, I think that's a great thing. But it's gonna be very expensive to redo this entire building that way. And it will have to be done.
And have you seen any other, um, tenants that you're designing buildings for currently that are interested in these type of angled windows?
You know, these, let me tell you, the young kids really wanna be in the city. I mean, they're des- they don't wanna be down the peninsula so much, they wanna be in the city. And I, I see the apartments they live in, thirty-eight hundred square feet. We're designing fifteen hundred of them. You know, thirty-eight hundred a month for a shoebox, but they don't care. They, what they care about is their job. Their average salary in San Francisco is a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. Just average salary. I mean, these kids are making good money, but they wanna be in the city. I, you know, it's gonna be tough to get somebody out here. I think it's gonna take a very special case, somebody who's very independent. And I think price is gonna be a big factor. You're gonna have to make a deal that they can't reject. And the fact that prices are going up in San Francisco, you know, you just gotta lower it and, and, and make a deal. I mean, I myself own a, a building in San Francisco that's, that's an old warehouse. And I could spend a lot of mon- money fixing it up. Or I can just give a good deal on the rent. And I give a good deal on the rent, because I'm gonna keep the building. Now, if I wanted to sell it, I would, I would fix up the building and jack up the rents as high, because the higher the rent, the more value the, the building is and the more, greater amount you can sell it for. But I'm not gonna sell my building. So I just give the tenants a, a break on the rent. And I think in this, this is gonna have to be a locational break on the rent. You've gotta, you know, you can jack up the rent a little year by year after that. But I think you gotta make somebody a hell of a good deal to get them down here.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think your design is, is very creative and that, um, you know, it is, it is unique. But one of the things that, that you did mention was, um, that you haven't seen other buildings like it. And of course, this isn't that you designed a long time ago and, uh, And of course, this isn't that you designed a long time ago, and Councilmember Lou had asked a similar question, so I'm going to ask, ask this to you. Have you designed something like this somewhere else? And if so, where?
Oh, I've designed things that, that would make this look like a developer's building.
No, I'm talking about you, the original design with the, the
Oh, yeah. You go to Singapore, there's a 32-story high-rise I did there with angled windows.
There's nothing in the Bay Area.
Oh, no, no. I, I'll tell you, the worst place for architecture in the world right now is the United States. The most exciting city architecturally is Singapore, or Singapore is, and Shanghai. Shanghai has the most amazing buildings, and they're all being done by American architects. There's, you know, it's, the Americans are doing their best work abroad. They can't do any decent work in the United States. In the United States, all of their architects are all hired by developers. And they are, and the architects in this country are really the accountants for developers. Developers use them as, as an accountant to make sure they make a lot of money and do the cheapest thing they can possibly get. But it, in, in foreign countries, the people who build the buildings, they keep owning them. They, they become family operations, where they, the kids inherit the building and they, they pass them down. So they take a lot more pride in, in their buildings. I mean, Americans, you know, they build a building and they're not going to hold it very long. They're going to hold it for 10, maybe five years, maybe 10 years, and then sell it and get more money, make a lot of money out of it and move on. I mean, it's, that's the difference between this country and, you know, and that's why our architecture is the way it is.
Okay.
You know?
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I think Terry.
Oh, Terry, I'm sorry. We've got one more question here.
It's, it's not really a question. It is more of a comment. And I wanted to thank you so much for explaining your vision for how the light's supposed to enter the space, and the theory behind it, and the, being reflective light. I'm just fascinated by your, the simplicity of how you explained it to us so that, so that I could understand it.
Yeah.
Because, you know, looking at these drawings, I would not know why things were done in certain ways. And, and I think it's just really amazing that you're able to give that to us. And I did want to ask you what you feel that changing the awning system to ribbon glass would do to your architectural design?
Well, I think it totally destroys it. Yeah, I mean, it just, you come, you put vertical glass in there and you've made, you know, another marshmallow sterile developer building. You've dumbed it down. And now you're going to create more heat in there, because the building's going to have a lot of heat gain. So now you're going to have to run the air conditioner, might even have to put a bigger mechanical system in there to take all that heat load. And the building's going to use more energy. It's not going to, it's going to be less energy efficient. I mean, anybody who's had an office on the south side, and that's why we only did that on the southeast and the southwest side, because that's where the sun is the most treacherous. But you still want people to see the view without having to put the blind down. And that was our whole idea. Now, yeah, you can't look up and see the sky. If you, if you could look up and see the sky, you'd have to have blinds on there, you know, most of the time, and then the heat would still come through there, so you'd be running the air conditioning on the spaces. And actually, air conditioning is one of the most expensive things to do. It's, in, in my building in San Francisco, I just have operable windows, no air conditioning. And I'm like, in, in the top 2% energy usage in the city. You know, because I just kept it simple. And this building just keeps it simple. And I, I think it should be really thought of as going for elite platinum, making the building even more efficient. Because these young kids, that's what they want. They want energy efficient buildings, and they want to know about that. And I don't think they, they, they care about decorator effects. I don't think, you know, the lobby, first of all, that round area isn't even a lobby. That was just a break, so when you walked in there, one door would open, I guess the curved doors are still there? Yeah. You know, it's just an air break from the inside, from the outside going in, because of the winds there. That's not a lobby. But it's, it's fairly big, so I guess I could see where people might think it's a lobby. But, you know, I could see a lot of high-tech solutions to some of the problems there, they have. That would be most graceful. I mean, you could take just the photovoltaic panels and put over the sloping awnings and plug those things in and generate a huge amount of electricity. There's a great Spanish firm that makes these things at a reasonable price. And this building could be generating a lot of its own electricity. One of the big things in these buildings is also the cost of the utilities. Now, I don't know if they're going on, you know, with the gross lease, but most people do a, a double net these days. And, you know, if they could show that they were saving the tenants a lot of money in utilities and such, ah, that would do a lot. So, because the pass-throughs in, in some of the buildings in San Francisco are 16 to 18 dollars a square foot. On top of the 60 dollars a square foot. So.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a couple of things if you don't mind. I also wanted to thank you very much for coming. It's nothing like hearing from the original architect, and not a bunch of assumptions about what you may or may not have thought, but actually knowing what you thought.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
And there are a couple, just two minor things that people keep talking about, and I thought it might be useful to just kind of set the record straight. And a number of people have said, you designed the windows that way so you could protect Dakin's teddy bears. True or false?
Oh, false. We never had any teddy bears along the perimeter. They were all in the big atrium space. You know?
Okay, that's my first little thing. The second thing that's not so little, and that is the concern over water leakage. And I'm wondering if you would speak to, does this design, does it kind of have the same kind of potential for water leakage as other kind of windows? Or, you know, why are they having water leakage? Do you think it's maintenance issues or design issues or what?
Well, when this building was designed, we had one of the world's experts in waterproofing out of San Francisco. And they designed all the waterproofing things. Building never leaked for a long time. But you know, the silicone sealant that holds all the buildings together is only good for like 20 to 30 years. After that, it all has to be scraped out and replaced. I would assume that this building is probably a good candidate for the replacing of all the waterproofing sealant, which is typical for high-rises. You go around San Francisco and you'll see every, you know, every high-rise building, at some point, they're working on it, scraping out the old sealants, putting in new sealants, because these just, they don't have a long lifespan. They've gotten longer, but I'm, I would, I'm pretty sure that this building, a lot of the waterproofing is silicone sealants, so they probably need to be replaced. And sooner is better than later.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next slip I have is for Michelle Salmon.
Did you want to skip over Anya or?
She deferred to have.
She deferred, okay.
Thank you. That was amazing. It really was. When we first finished buildings, you know, the landfill, and they started to build out there, and I thought, oh gosh, it's just going to be a bunch of boxes. And they built the black building, and it was a big black box. And then they built the Dakin building. And I can remember driving down the freeway and looking at it going, wow, that's, that's actually really beautiful. It was like this glowing gorgeous white thing out, out on the water as you're coming down, you know, the bay shore. And it made me happier about having all these buildings out there, because we built something that was different and beautiful and amazing. And I remember when the Dakin company moved out of the building because they had outgrown it, and they were heartbroken to leave that building. And over the years, it, it has, you know, kind of gotten a little more hidden because the trees have gotten really large. And I went today and drove around the building, I couldn't come on Saturday, I really wanted to, and reminded myself of how beautiful it is. And one thing I disagree with is, you do see that the top of the building is an ellipse from a long ways away. And the two views I see of the building the most are coming down the freeway, when I first crest the hill and start down. And the other view is from the water, because I sail a lot. And the view from the water of that building is still amazing, even with the other buildings kind of, you know, but there it is, and there's its round little top, and, and there's the beautiful articulations of the building. And I think it really is an amazing building the way it looks. But I don't own it. And then, I, I have to say that I, I work in a refurbished building that was the first building built on the spit in Emeryville. And at first, when we moved there, I thought, oh, wow, this is the most beautiful view, and you can see the bay, and it's gorgeous. And I was envious of the people who were sitting right next to the window, I'm the cube next to the window, not right next to the window. And after about a month, I thought, God, thank God I'm not sitting there. Because it got so hot next to the windows that faced the, the east and the southeast. And so, after a couple of months, they came and they put in a window, black window drapes that come down. And that helped a little bit, but it still didn't stop the heat. And then they came in and they put this like boom on the windows to try, try and stop the heat. And our HVAC goes constantly. And, and if it gets out of whack at all, the temperature just soars next to the window. You, you put your hand like this close to the window, and you can feel the heat off that window from this far away. We actually had one window fracture, heat fracture last year. So, yeah, it's a problem. And, and it's not energy efficient at all, and this design is. You know, we talk about what's popular now with the tenants and the open space and the get-together here and get-together there, and how people work. And, you know, a few years ago, it was very popular to work at home a couple of days a week. It was very environmental, and I loved it. And I worked at home two days a week. Now, I only work at home one day a week, because the culture's changing thanks to that woman at Yahoo, who has decided that people can't work at home anymore, and so now everyone's following suit. But that's a trend. And, and all of these things are trends. But the architecture of a building like this should endure past trends. And that's what, having a building that's an award-winning building like this is about. And you go and you look in San Francisco, and I'll, I'll use an example of the Crowe Zellerbach building. You know, I used to think of that, and I still do, as the Emerald Palace. It was one of the first hung glass buildings that was built, a modern skyscraper in San Francisco. And it is still an exquisite building. And yeah, they could build a giant skyscraper on that space, but instead it's there, and it, and it helps define the character of San Francisco and some of the few architectural icons that we have. And that's what this building is for Brisbane. And when Sierra Point gets all built out someday, and when the Baylands is all built out someday, I hope we have a few architectural treasures left, and I think that the Dakin building is one of them. And I think that the original architect gave the owners of the building some very, very good ideas tonight about how to make this building continue to be a special building and one that is an enhancement and not just another human warehouse. So thank you.
Michelle, next. Excuse me. Thanks, Michelle. Next slip I have is Jamil Munir, also on our planning commission.
Jamil Munir, 930 Humboldt Road, Brisbane. First, I want to clarify what the applicant said about the, that I was the only one who didn't like the building. If this was a new building, I probably will have less concern. The reason that I didn't vote in favor of that is because this is an iconic building. And before we destroy that, we need to have a clear understanding as to what we're doing and why we're doing it. And some of the reasonings that the applicant provided at the planning commission, to me, were not, not sufficient. And I was looking for some answers as to what they're claiming to be is correct or not. If it was a new building, I probably won't have much concern. I will say that this is the train, let's go with it. But if you want to destroy something which has such a significant value, we need to have some significant reasons to destroy it. As far as the interior of the building, I had no real concerns. They can remove all the partitions, redesign the interior, whatever they want. It was the exterior that I was trying to concentrate. If you look at the history of many great cities, including San Francisco, whenever it comes to change the historic building, they go through real major scrutiny before they decide, let's do away with that. I don't think the reason should be that it will make it more marketable, so let's destroy it. No. The reason should be that what will be the impact to the community if we destroy that? Is it going to affect the community? Is it part of the treasure we're trying to destroy? Are there any other ways that we can save that? And I was told all along in the planning commission meeting, by the applicant, that we want to make it more energy efficient. Now, the architect, the original architect tells us, that's not the case. The building is already energy efficient. And by doing that, we're going to make it worse in terms of the heat load. And some of the ideas that the, the architect mentioned, I being a professional mechanical engineer, I agree with that, that indirect light is better light. And also, with the slope window design that he proposed, what it does is it spreads the light all over the room, rather than concentrating right at the vertical point. So that, that's a very, very good design element. And that was not brought out in the planning commission meeting. And I was hoping that, that council consultant will look at all these factors and come up with some significant report as to what is the purpose of those angled windows? Why are they there? And what will happen if you remove it? That was not answered. And I think the consultant failed to do the job. Consultant was mainly concerned, I guess, about the inside space. Inside the space, we can play with it any way we want. We can change the walls, whatever walls we want to put it, wherever we want to put the conference room. It's the material, it's the outside that counts. Because people looking at the outside of the architect. I can give you an example, recent example, the Twitter company that moved to Furniture Mart. They're, they're doing the entire interior, but if you look, look at the exterior of the building, it's still the same. Why didn't they remove this whole, all windows and come up with a glass window? They didn't do that. Because San Francisco has very strict requirements for preserving the historical buildings. And I think the, we should have the similar concepts here. We can do a lot of things by not destroying the angular windows. There are a lot of things can be done inside, and I being an engineer, I gave, at some of the meetings, I did give some of the ideas to them. That please do not touch the outside. We could do a lot of things for the outside to make it even better, but as far as the architectural element, I don't think we should destroy that. If you want to make it a straight wall, just like any other building, 10 years from now, it will be obsolete. Again, are we going to go, come back to this, to the city and say, oh, this is not marketable, I want to do something else? This building is there, is, it has some history to it, it has won some of the major awards, and it's fortunate to have it here in our, our town. This is the only iconic building that we can claim. And are we going to destroy that? And my role as a planning commission, I want to make sure that according to the general plan, we have to preserve the integrity and the, whatever we have in this town, which makes it, makes it as makes it, makes it as unique for our area, just like we want to save the mountain. We don't want to allow anybody to go and build on the Brisbane acres. We want to keep the open space markets, you know, the mountains to be there. This is in similar way. And when we are blindfolded, just looking at the, you know, this building is more functional or that functional, yes, it can be more functional because we are in a, in a new century now, but that's not the point. The point is, this is an iconic building. Are we willing to sacrifice that? Just because the developer says that he can make it more marketable by putting, making that as a run-of-the-mill, as I call that, building? That's something that we really have to think. And also, we had to think that this, by doing this, what, how, what kind of message we are giving it to the, our new generation? They are looking for us to maintain and keep the iconic building so they can be proud of their city. Are we going to just get rid of that because of the fact that it's not marketable? Or because of the fact that, because it's going to increase a little 10% of the view? As the architect mentioned, that the glare will be a biggest problem if you make it a straight window. And you can, you can see in your own, in your home buildings, if it's, it's an angular, you will have a clear view. You know? Also, I like the idea that in case of rain, rain, you will still have the unobstructed view. And people pay a lot of emphasis to the view. When I first move in in, in Brisbane, I say, what a terrific view. But how many times I, I spent looking at the view? When I'm doing my work, I'm concentrated on my work, not looking in the window, outside the window. It's good to have the view, but I think with the, with the angular windows, you still have plenty of view. And I don't think it abstracts to the extent that the, the applicant is saying. Again, I'm not against the business. I'm not trying to say that businesses should not come here and we're going to be obstructing the, because of whatever reasons we have. Businesses have to realize that they have to respect what the city has in terms of the treasures that we have, iconic figures, iconic, you know, buildings. I suggested that I'll be more than willing to work with them, but since I'm a planning commissioner, I cannot do that. But they had already determined that that's what they want to do. And their emphasis was just to mention that, oh, this is going to improve this, improve and improve this, but what about what is going to destroy? They never mentioned that. And again, I was not very happy that the applicant mentioned that I was the only one didn't like the, their design. I did like this design if it was a new building, but I didn't like it because it was destroying the, one of the historical building. And that's why I said, we have to spend more time before we just go ahead and, you know, start destroying what we treasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamil. Carolyn Parker, it's the last slip I have.
When I had to make a decision on which way to vote, I felt very ambivalent. I did go along with the applicant. I'm, I'm not sure I'm very happy with that at all. I'm, I'm happy that you are looking at this. I've, I, I happen to agree, I think it's an iconic building and I feel that, you know, we need to think seriously about it. As a private citizen, I probably wouldn't have voted the way I was, but as a planning commissioner, I felt that we needed to vote based on the information that was presented. My understanding was that we could not bring in, we couldn't go out and do our own, we, we had, um, a letter from the city attorney that said that we could not go out and do our own research. We, and we needed to make decisions based on what was there. And based on what was there, I voted this way. I voted for the applicant. I then immediately turned around and tried to find someone to appeal, but it already had been appealed. I feel that, um, in retrospect, I would have probably reached out to people in the city and, and said, you know, please pay, pay attention to this, we need your help. And I think I would, you know, I have learned a lesson. But, um, I, I like the appeals process, like, because the planning commission has to make decisions based on what's presented. And the city council can go in and do research. And, and I think that's a good point. I, I really appreciate that there is an appeals process. Thank you very much.
Okay, I don't have any more slips. Is there anybody out there who wishes to speak on this, who has not spoke? Anya, come on up.
Thank you. Allow me, thank you. I want to go back to the general plan. Only two of you were part of the very long process of, of developing our general plan, which also was kind of award-winning because the state told us that it was the best general plan in this, the whole state. And because it was such a long process, you remember that? And then it was, there was a referendum and it was voted on. All these policies in the general plan that both the planning commissioner and you are pledged to follow were really, really good policies. And in 94, when it was passed, the Deacon Building existed. And I say that some of these policies were inspired by the fact that we had managed on our Sierra Point planning, which was really a careful plan. A marina is a first-class marina. We wanted first-class office buildings. And we started that process and then it stopped, I don't know why. Maybe because we couldn't get the restaurants to come there or, or red일 to come that we wanted and it's kind of got stuck. But the general plan policies, they do emphasize the preservation and the community character that comes from these iconic treasures. And this, it, it is really our first piece of public art, I would say. And that's the value that you have to look at. Not just, I'm sorry. Not just what some developer wants. So, I, I hope, I know that you have your feelings about wanting to be so business-friendly, that's really, we have to be business-friendly no matter what. And public, if they don't show up during the summer months, this decision by the planning commission was made in, in the summer when you were gone on vacation, nobody really had any chance to... And I don't know where she gets the idea that, that a planning commission can't do research and look into things. Of course they can. They should find out how people feel about things and if they don't have public coming. And to just hear the developer and staff, which also did not do their research, I mean, to talk about the teddy bears and to put down the, the award-winning, the importance of our little Brisbane being on a world stage with this building. That was not really emphasized enough for the planning commission. So I'm very glad you're hearing us now and I do appreciate that business is business, but the city is a city. And I believe very much that, that something can be done, you can work out a compromise that will, as we've heard, maintain the treasure that is the exterior of the building and then work on it as needed to make it marketable. So that's, that's really my, my point and I hope that you'll be a little bit open, okay?
Thank you, Anya. Anybody else wish to speak? I have no more slips.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before closing public comment, I, I think it would be a good idea to specifically ask the permit applicants as well as the appellants if they have any final comments that they'd like to make or questions that have arisen as a result of what they've heard.
Sure.
And before we do that, could I just ask one, I just had a few follow-up questions to Mr. Brown, the, the original design architect, if you wouldn't mind coming up again. Thank you. So, we heard a lot about the, the awnings or fenestrations, but we haven't heard that much about the original intent behind the design of the, the roof cap and the circular entryway and why the building was made all white? And I'd like to hear more about that.
Well, one person made an interesting comment that the building looked different a number of years ago when the trees were much smaller and you could see much more white. But, you know, when I was designing it, basically, I wanted a big bay window because the building faced on the bay. So I thought, well, how great to have a bay window. And we did have an outdoor space at one point there, that they're talking about doing an outdoor space, which I think is terrific. Because we, we did want to put some doors there and have an outdoor space that go to, but it got cut back for budget reasons. I think that's a great concept that, that they have. And it just needs to be executed in the, in the, in the right way. But, you know, the whole idea of the atrium and bringing it up through the floors and having the floors overlook everything is, is to make it a, a community building. So everybody could kind of look at different levels and see people at different levels and, and make it seem like a family, a family building and not like a spec building that just has an elevator go up to the floor and every floor is separated from each other. And if, if you're the same tenant on a different floor, you don't even relate to the other floors. So the idea was, was just to open the whole thing up so everybody could look over the side, see the teddy bears, see what everybody was doing and, and feel a community.
Thank you. And with regard to the entryway...
Okay, the, the mechanical equipment, mechanical, it's, it's very interesting. I worked for a famous architect in, in New York City, actually, a couple of them. And he always said that you can tell architects, the real architect, when it comes to the roof. Because you can tell if the architect has any imagination. Because you can change the position of the equipment, but you always want to give it a little sculptural feeling that fits in with the building. Now, if you take the, the shape of the diamond, which the building is really, now, how do you put a square shape in the shape of a diamond, on, on a diamond? I mean, it's going to look very clunky and very awkward. So what you want to do is, is take a free-form shape and insert it there. And that's how the, the circle really came about to be. It was a free-floating shape inside of the, the triangular shape. And, you know, it's, real artists do things by contrast. They don't do things by copying them. If you think of flags, probably the greatest flag with unity is the Japanese flag because it has a rectangular outside, but it has a circle on the inside. And it achieves unity by opposite forms. And that's what, you know, Picasso worked with, I mean, all the famous art, artists always use contrast for unity and not similarity.
And was there any relationship between the roof cap and the entryway, both being...
There wasn't, but when it was built, I could see that it seemed like there was, those two, those two elements unified each other. Because you had the, the circular entry and then you had the circle on top and it almost looked like it penetrated through the building. And actually, it was quite a, I didn't intend it to be that way, but it turned out to be, I thought, very charming and playful.
And, and the white color, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Okay, the white color was, I was out there. When, when I first started thinking about this project, I was out walking along the beach there. And there was a seagull flying along. And there was a point where the seagull just had his feet touching the ground and its wings still spread. And I thought, oh, that's what I'd like the building to look like. I don't want it to be part of the land, but I'd like it to be half of the land and half of the sky. And so I wanted to give the building a lightness. And when I'd look out there, I'd see the sailboats and all the sailboats would have white on it. And since it was by the water, white is, seems to be a very nautical color and goes very, very well with the blue of the, of the water. It unifies, the, the two colors unify each other. I mean, you know, you see people with black sails and the boats don't look so charming. You see them with red sails and they look okay for a little while, but there's boats with white sails just, you know, seem more exuberant and give you more energy back than any other color. And that's, I wanted that building to share its energy with the environment and the white just was terrific for them.
And what is your feeling on the proposed design changes of those elements? The roof, the entry and the color?
You know, I mean, I'm not a decorator. So when I do things, it's for a serious reason. And I think, you know, we've just seen, you know, architectural decorators. I, I don't see any serious, real serious proposals there. I mean, I think the, the square entry is really clunky. Oh my gosh, you know? And, you know, I think changing the, the rooftops, I, one thing I read, I just read it this morning, so I haven't had time to really study it, to make a square shape on the roof. And then to take off all the windows, well, you know, it's like telling some girl, you know, I want to marry you, you're the most beautiful girl in the world, but you know, I want to change the shape of your lips and your eyes and your nose and then everything will be okay. Well, don't trust a guy who does that. And, you know, it's, the first thing people do is when they can't lease a building, they want to change the architecture. This happens all the time. And because they think if they change it, you know, I, I myself was trying to lease out a space for one of my developer clients. And the, the real estate guy said, look, just tear the whole thing apart because, you know, they don't want any walls. Well, in this particular case, the tenant they got wanted all the walls, but they'd already spent $250,000 tearing them down. So it's, it's always a thing with real estate leasing. Do you tear down the walls now? Do you wait? You know, and it just depends on the situation. And, you know, it, it's, it's a tough thing. Because it's, like I said, we're, we've been renovating buildings that are just junk in the city. And they lease up at high prices, just like that. No windows at all on the long sides. And, but we do skylights and, and great shafts and atriums through there to help that. So, you know, it's not always changing it like that. But, you know, I would like to see changes in the building, like human changes. Like I like the, you know, the outdoor patio on, on the bay, doing something there, opening access out to that. I'd like to see more energy efficiency, seeing if we can get some photovoltaic panels in there to generate some electricity. And, you know, the methane is always a fascinating thing because that site always has a lot of methane. And I don't know if you could take that to run the mechanical equipment? You know, I've done that in, in, in Singapore, but I'm, I don't, I don't know that it's been done in this country. But that's a big garbage dump out there and there's a lot of methane.
All right. Thank you for your explanation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. I got one more slip, Michael Barnes. Must have been watching this at home or something at this time of night.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I certainly was. Michael Barnes, Brisbane resident. I don't see this as an iconic building. In this hot commercial market and with all its distinctive architectural features, the building is still empty. It might as well be a big, square, boring box. Please allow the proposed increases in efficiency. And by that, I don't mean just sticking a generator on the doors that seem to spin like a propeller, but actually become a LEED-certified building. Thank you.
Okay. Before I ask the applicant representative or representatives to come up and start, you know, doing a rebuttal, I guess... know, doing a rebuttal, I guess, is there anybody else who wishes to speak who hasn't spoke? Anybody? Okay, you don't need a slip, you can raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, give us your name.
My name is Cameron Basset, I'm representing the owner. I think in general, I work for a developer, and there's been a lot of talk of what a developer is and being just a developer that wants to make money. That's not our process, that hasn't been our process on this project. When we first looked at the building, we saw the building as a highly unique and beautiful building that needed something to change to make it live again. And our assessment of the building wasn't just on our own, it was not in a vacuum, we went out to brokers, we spoke to your planning commission ahead of even purchasing the building. We came in, and you never really knows in our position of what the city's going to want to see from something like this, even if you read the general plan and, you know, what the design criteria is. So, we came to the city and asked, and we showed something that was fairly conservative, which is not typical for what we actually do. We have numerous projects that have been very aggressive in design, and our feedback was, that's much too plain. So, we said, great, let's go back and look at what the original design of this building was, and from the feedback we received, how do we embrace what is there and functional and working? And how do we make modifications to the design to help it alleviate some of those constraints? And I think we did, we came to the city, met with planning commission on numerous occasions onsite, spoke about these issues collectively, and at the end of the day, we were approved at planning commission for this project. You know, the, we're very appreciative that the original architect came tonight and spoke to us about, you know, what he designed this building for. And I think, you know, Gary said it very well to say that design is subjective, and everybody's going to have an opinion about what this should be. At the end of the day, we are a ownership company that is looking to lease this building. That's natural for any building, it should be leased. And all we're trying to do is address the issues that we've reached out and made an assessment, a calculated assessment of what needs to happen, and we feel we've been responsible in doing so. We've worked with you all to go through this process even further to get to tonight. You know, my role in this, in the company, is to organize the design efforts, and there's numerous things that can be going on with a building that you have to address, but I think we've made a very direct effort to not only maintain and preserve what we can, as well as modify to make useful again. And at this point in time, our goal is to just be successful with the city, to finish this project, get people into the building, and yes, we'll likely sell the building in the future, but that's only natural for anybody that's in our position, that's not an unusual position, it's fairly typical. I mean, the city sees this constantly. So, I just wanted to make it clear, you know, on a personal note, I take my job very personally, it's a very serious thing, every project we look at, I spend a lot of time to make sure that I'm giving consideration to what's right for a project, not just what's going to make money, which I feel is how developers are portrayed often. It's not the case. We give a very hard effort to try to make sure we're doing what's right for the project and the community, the people that are going to use it, so it's successful for everybody. So, I just wanted to end with saying that, that that's our position, that's how we feel, and we hope you'll consider that.
Any questions?
Do you have questions? Yeah, so you said that you've made an effort to maintain and preserve what's there, can you go over what specifically you've done in the design proposal for this building to do?
Sure. So, the, when we first came to the building, we walked into the building, and as you walk in, you see the, you come in through the, it's almost the funnel that takes you back to the atrium. And our whole interior design and what we're trying to accomplish is going to be to walk into the building and see this grand atrium space, and how it flows out to the green area in the back, the lawn. You know, it's great to hear that that was what they hoped to do, and we're able to enable that and have that happen. You know, going up onto the upper floors, you start looking at some of the conference rooms and their functionality, it's obvious that your goal is to approach the window and come out to it. We're trying to enhance that a step further by allowing you to walk another, I believe it's four feet closer to the edge of that, get to more glass, more visibility, and then one step further on the glass line itself, yes, we are going to be changing that, but it is still consistent with some of the other sides of the building. We didn't want to make it, you know, a new awning structure, we wanted it to make it so it would still be consistent, but our goal is to help a space be functional for people that are occupying it. And in our experience recently, as well as over the last, you know, my career's not as long as many people in this room, it's 10 years, but in my experience, glass line, yes, it can get hot, these are things that happen on many, many buildings, but the views that you could achieve from this building that are partially blocked, we felt that that was a modification that was necessary. From reaching out to the community, the brokers told us the same thing, and that was one of the things that we heard repeatedly about coming to the building, that architecturally, that was not what the public wanted to see that was going to occupy the building. So, I feel that we did maintain the atrium, some of the aesthetic of the exterior of the building, although we are changing or proposing to change the articulated glass, it did stay consistent with the backside of the building that faces the bay. A lot of the interior views from the upper floors down to the atrium, we're planning to keep that open as much as possible, to utilize the atrium as much as we can, which we feel is the strongest point of the building, as the owner and, you know, who we're going to project to use the building.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
You know, I have questions for the applicant, but I don't know who is the right person to address this.
Well, I wanted to ask you one, it had to do with the energy efficiency, because there was, Mr. Brown said that by taking those windows out is going to really make it less, much less energy efficient, and I think you've alluded to that you're just going to keep the current mechanical stuff in situ in place, so?
Correct. Our initial assessment of the mechanical systems on the building was that they were in good working order, they still have some life left to them, so we don't want to throw away something that's still useful. If we are going to move forward with replacing this glass, we would be using glass that meets new Title 24 requirements. I'm not a Title 24 consultant or an energy efficiency modeler or anything of that nature, but, you know, that's a focus of ours, to make sure that we're going to, you know, create a development that's going to be usable and not have a high utility cost. You know, we always have the goal of trying to achieve LEED certification with buildings. In our opinion, this one wasn't a great candidate based on some of the transportation requirements that you need to get those kinds of credits, that's a very large portion of what you need to achieve, at least in my understanding. But going forward, we are planning on implementing, you know, LED lighting, things of that nature to help with energy efficiency, and utilize the systems to the best of their capacity. We would also promote that with our tenant coming in eventually, that they would go for a LEED certification on a TI basis, on a tenant improvement basis. So, that was our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So, we had a project that was before the planning commission, you know, they, it was actually, you know, first went before the planning commission, yeah, and then it was appealed, it came to the council. Part of the development agreement was to have the development go from LEED silver, which is part of our green building ordinance, to LEED gold. And so, what type of LEED structure? And I also have a question for staff, you know, with the amount of improvement, does this project kick in the requirements for the green building ordinance?
So, to answer your first part of the question, you know, the energy efficiency portion is, like I said, is a focus of ours on all projects that we're working on. We would encourage a tenant to do some of that work for their tenant improvement process. So, I think going forward, there's parts of our exterior innovation that only gets you so far before you have to touch other elements on the interiors, which is something that a tenant, when they come in to complete the last 20%, as it was referred to earlier, that's where you can achieve a lot more of those credits. But in doing the renovation as proposed, we will achieve some of those credits, I don't know how far that would get you, we haven't gotten to that point in the design process to do a full tabulation of what credits we're achieving and what we're not yet. But that is always a goal of ours.
All right, John?
The LEED requirements, the green building ordinance, get kicked in at 50% of the interior space is remodeled, as I understand it. So, again, we'd have to, we haven't seen tenant improvement plans or plans about how they're modifying the interior space, whether that would exceed that threshold or not, so I couldn't tell you at this moment.
Okay. So, do you anticipate there being at least 50%?
I don't believe so, I'd have to do a takeoff on the plans, but I don't believe we're touching that. We're touching the exterior facade and the lobby interiors, and then we would be, like was suggested, it's typical for us to go in and open up the space as much as possible, so it would be the removal on a demo basis. We would not be looking for a certificate of occupancy on that portion of the project. A tenant would then need to come in, do their build-out, and then they would get their certificate typically for this type of business plan.
Okay, so it's kind of up in the air, we're not sure, we'll have to wait until you get that tenant and the tenant decides, okay, these are the things that I want to do before I move in?
Correct, and our improvements would be in line with promoting that process. So, parts of the glass, systems, anything we were doing with any materials in the lobby area that we proposed, those would be low VOC materials that we could go forward and actually apply those towards those credits.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I just wanted to follow up with Cameron a little bit, to make sure it was all part of what we're hearing today, because we've talked about it in the past some. Time is truly of the essence now, and it has been as it was three months ago, if anything, it's even more so. The length of the continued strength of this market, you know, is at a record level right now, and for it to be assumed and continues to maintain into the future is, you know, something that had proven wrong in the past. I would just like to say also, when we acquired this building, we acquired it with the view that it was a company headquarters. I don't think a lot of people actually saw it that way when the group who had foreclosed it out were selling it. They couldn't, people in talking to the marketplace had a difficult time seeing past some of the window systems and things which have, in our mind, prevented its leasability at the current point in time. I think what's in the report there, the modified approvals with, or proposed approvals, with eliminating the color, with eliminating a lot of the gray accent points, are things which we could be comfortable with. And, you know, I think the roof screening is something which we think it's important to have a screen up to cover some of the cell tower equipment that the prior owner put on the roof, limiting our ability to do different things up there. The shape of it, you know, I think we would look to work with you on something there. In our view, though, the window line is the one thing which we think, you know, is of the most critical importance, to allow it to be able to be modernized enough to be able to be acceptable to today's tenants. And we see the collaborative open environments which are, you know, which have emerged across all industries, not really just tech, being something which is more than a trend, it's a metaphor, a crowning point for things moving ahead. So, that's all.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Terry.
So, on this, this building, you're just looking at, we're looking at the core and shell separately, so you're, the proposed design changes that we have here don't kick in any LEED certification from staff? Is that correct? John?
I'm just looking up the green building ordinance as we speak here. Modification to existing commercial project, yeah, I would, again, we'd have to look at the details, but I'm not seeing the kind of changes being proposed as kicking in the green building ordinance based on preliminary discussion.
Okay. And we don't have any real numbers on what the removal of the festorations on the windows would do to the energy efficiency of the building, based on the information that the original architect testified to, that that is all part of the HVAC, natural illumination and cooling of the building, but we don't have any solid facts as far as to the current or the future energy use versus the two designs. Is that correct?
I'm going to let Seth Hanley, our architect, talk on this, because he's more of an expert than I am.
Hello, I'm Seth Hanley, AIA. I'm the decorator, who has been referred to several times this evening. First of all, I'd like to commend you on the spirited debate about architecture. It is excellent to be in a room of people who are so passionate about design and about the buildings in their community. Honestly, I commend everybody for being here this evening as well, it doesn't happen very often. So, as an architect, even though we're having a spirited discussion about even our design work, I'm happy to be in the room and hearing this conversation. But to answer your question, we have not run the specific numbers on the existing and proposed, but what I can tell you is this, the California Building Code and the energy requirements within it currently far exceed anything that has ever existed in the Building Code before in California. So, any work that happens to this building is going to have to meet the minimum requirements of the Building Code. Technology has come a long way, not least of all glazing technology, shading technology, control systems, et cetera, all of which are available and at our disposal as designers in the 21st century. We're confident that the energy consumption of the building is going to be right in line with the very high aspirations of the state of California. So, no specific numbers yet, obviously, it's very important to us, it's very important to tenants going into buildings, who frankly, as an architect, they get asked about this all the time, particularly by our technology clients, because it's important to their staff, and they want to be able to feed back information with pride that their building operates at a high level. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have as well.
As the architect for this plan, were you aware of the design reasoning for the festorations and the illumination reflected light?
I think we've been researching, and we've been trying to get to the bottom of some of the design decisions that were made originally, and we weren't being flippant when we talked about stuffed toys, that was something that we had heard, it was anecdotal, but it was more information that we were trying to lay our hands on to try to understand why the building looked the way that it did. We have since heard it from the source now that that has nothing to do with it, and it was fascinating, actually, to listen to the original architect talk about the design Having said all of that, when we were brought on board, the owners of the building were very concerned about user experience. You have to be in the 21st century, and you have to be in San Francisco, particularly with technology clients. We talk about users, but what we really mean is people. Buildings are for people, and the experience that people have in those buildings is actually critically important, it's every bit as important as design, even iconic design. When we review the building, and we do a lot of work with technology companies in San Francisco, so we know them pretty well, they don't like to work in dark boxes, contrary to some opinions that were offered this evening, although it is true that some engineers that do a lot of coding do like the lights turned down a little bit. That does not mean that they like to work in concrete boxes. And it is important also, from an economic perspective and from employee well-being, that people are able to test out their eyes, that they're not just staring at a computer and staring at walls all day long. But in any event, when we looked at the design, we thought there were a couple of things. We felt that the building needed softening, and we felt that from the interior, users needed greater access to light and views, and it was pretty much that simple. And I think we'll agree that from the things that we've talked about and that we've had some conflict over perhaps, it comes down to two things, it comes down to the awning windows on two elevations, and it comes down to the lobby experience of the building. I think there are some other elements that we can work through. Lobbies are very important spaces, they identify where the front door of a building is. Seems like a really basic thing, but one of the tenants of, one of the basics of architectural education is being able to read a building and identify how you enter it. We felt like we could improve that experience somewhat by giving the building a face and increasing the size of the lobby, which are in themselves very important spaces now in buildings for technology companies. They use those spaces, too. They're no longer places that you pass through, they want people to hang out there, they want there to be energy in those spaces, they want people to see them as secondary They want people to see them as secondary working spaces, secondary meeting spaces. It's very hard to do in a space that doesn't feel very activated. So we were motivated by that, making it larger, increasing the light. We also felt like, on the inside, that we really needed to play to what is happening in terms of giving people a very gallivant feeling in the space. I don't want to overplay it. It's quite simple. People want to be in open environments now. They want to be able to see each other, and they want to be able to see out of their building. So we approached it from a very functional perspective, the design. I think we were respectful. We know this building is a wonderful building and has great bonds, but there were two elements that we felt were perhaps incompatible with the modern-day working environment. And so that's how we approached it. Energy is always on our minds, as is the well-being of the people that have to use the buildings. It has to be. It's just where we're at. But I hope that that helps to help you understand a little bit of how we got where we did and why we did what we did. It was certainly not our intention to start ripping things apart, because it was easy or less expensive, to be frank.
So to clarify, the two elements that you felt were incompatible with the modern working environment were the angled building, angled windows in the lobby?
The awning windows and the entry experience, which is through the lobby, yes. The building, in fact, is a square. It's a square rotated 45 degrees. And what happens is that when you enter the building currently, you enter under the point of the building, which, the word was used earlier, perhaps mistakenly, looming. And actually, that was a good word for us. We felt that it did loom, and that it wasn't particularly inviting. So we felt that just by slightly reorienting the landscaping and reorienting the approach to the building, you could actually leave some of the, well, actually, a lot of the architecture in place, but it would actually just subtly change the way you would perceive the building as you approached it. So actually, we thought that that was a fairly minimal move in the scheme of things.
You finished, Floyd? Go ahead, Ray. Okay. I'm wondering if, now that you've heard the original conception of the penetration, the awning system for the windows... Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay. I'll start again. Sorry.
Okay.
You know, now that you've heard from the original architect...
Yes.
...of the explanation of his reasoning for designing the window, the angular awning windows the way he did?
Yes.
How would you compare that reasoning and the consequences for the working space with, you know, what you're proposing to do?
Well, I think the original architect is obviously a very compelling narrative for how he arrived at the design solution that he did. And it's very interesting to hear. I think that the intent to use the shelf system and the awning system as a means to bounce light further into the space is compelling. I would say respectfully, can we prove that? We've been to the building many times, and I personally, and maybe it's the wrong time of year, have not seen evidence of that light penetration as a result of that shelf system. However, I do appreciate the static solar shading that's on the south facade, but it is also static. And one of the other things that we've learned from our technology clients, in fact, we can stop talking about technology, because in reality, it's people in the modern workplace, and not just in the Bay Area, but in other places, too. They want to be able to control their environments. So it's a way to control an environment by saying, this is what you get, and you can't change it. Another way is to offer people the choice. You can have full glazing, full light and views, and if you need to, you can close the blinds. Interestingly enough, there are blinds there now. So they're very difficult to attach, because obviously, the way that the system is designed at the moment, it's difficult to get the blinds up there. You can see evidence of that when you're there. So I would say the blinds are still in use, and you have permanently limited access to some views. My initial take on it, and I thought it was very interesting, was that when you're in the space, even though it's not actually doing this, there's something about it that directs your view to the parking lot, which I think is the last thing that we would want to do. There are great views outside of the window, and it was obvious to us to open them up. I'm sure the original architect would like an opportunity to respond to some of the things that I'm saying, and I'd be happy to hear them. But that's how we approached the design, and that's what our motivation was when we looked at it.
Could we hear that?
Well, I think we already heard it, but...
Yeah, well, I mean...
We're getting into the professional...
Right.
Pissing contest, basically.
I'm actually going to avoid that very specifically. We're very respectful of our peers in the...
Yeah. That's why I don't think it's a problem. But I think that, to me, this is really the issue. And I'm still not clear in my mind as to, you know, what makes the most sense. So I'm appreciative of your reasoning, and I'm sure that Mr. Brown has a different take on it than...
Well, he's already stated it, but if he wants to come up and restate...
I'll leave it up to him if he wants to. If he feels that he's already said it, then that's okay. Mr. Brown?
I think I've already said it.
Okay.
I already, fair enough. May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I'd like to take a break and stretch for a few minutes.
Okay. Are you finished?
I am, unless you have any other questions.
Okay.
And then we can come back for it.
Okay. Leave the public hearing open right now? Okay.
For the moment, yeah. I just think that it's...
Counsel? I agree with that?
It's fine.
We've been here three hours.
Okay. So we're going to take five.
Place issue.
Take five. Come back.